Hello everyone. Hello everyone. Hello everyone. Hello everyone. Hello everyone.
Uh, excuse for the technical difficulties. I will begin again. Call to order. Welcome to the regular board meeting of Houghton Calf District School Board on Tuesday, June the sixteenth, 2020. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you're recognized to speak. In order to be recognized to speak, please type "hand up" in the chat box. Once you have been recognized, please turn your microphone and camera on. Opening, um, exercise trustee Karata, would you please lead us in the opening exercise?
Of course, Mr. Chair. Please join me in the sign of our faith and name the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. A prayer for life's changes. Dear Lord, I've come to an important crossroads in my life and I pray that you will take my hand and guide me along a path that you would have me to go. May your word be a lamp to my feet and a light to my path as I now step out into the unknown. I pray that you would continue to guard and guide the way I take and I thank you that you have planned every day of my life. Lord, I pray that this may be a wonderful new beginning for us all and not the end in our road in our service to our neighbor. Help us to seize every opportunity that arises and to explore the gifts you have given us so that they may be used to glorify your name. I trust you, Lord, to be with me in sickness and in health, in richness and in poverty, and pray that I will submit day by day to the leading of your spirit and find peace in your love, knowing that you are my light and my life, my way and my end. Together in his name, amen. In the name of Father and Son, the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please rise for the national anthem. So trust, am I on? Yes. Trustees, we will skip agenda item 1.2 motions adopted in camera and 1.2, point three information received in camera. We move on to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yes. Trustee Erhern Zernotta, go ahead.
I just need to know for clarification. I have a notice of motion. Do we went, I would like to present the notice of motion, the title only?
Yes, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you. It'll be entitled.
Can I, can I, can we first have a motion and then a second there and then we can put in your notice?
Okay.
I also have a point of order on the table.
Uh, well, can we, can we have a motion to, to accept it, the agenda and then when we go to a vote, we can discuss it?
I move.
I believe the point of order supersede.
I will move.
I second.
All right. Moved by trustee De Rosa, seconded by trustee Carabella. All right. Now I will entertain the notice of motion. Trustee Erhern Zernotta, you have the floor for your notice of motion.
The notice of motion, the title will be board meetings.
Board meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead trustee Guzzo.
I'd like to raise a point of order, uh, under 9.12 of the bylaws, notice of motion. Item 4.6 has been added to the agenda. Um, the title is, is school generated funds. Um, on the last board meeting, it was not actually read as per the bylaws, uh, in the minutes, I mean during the meeting, therefore it cannot be reflected in the minutes. Um, so we would like it to be moved back to an information item as a notice of motion.
Um, very good. Thank you. I will take that under consideration for the moment. Is there any other points of order?
Um, I have a, I wanted to add something to the agenda.
All right. So let's take the other, adding something to the agenda. No, just, just a minute trustee Guzzo, just a minute. I need to know whether or not there is anything that would be dealing with the same item you're dealing with. Okay. So just bear with me. Uh, trustee Carabella, yes?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to add a discussion item to the agenda about the French immersion for the academic year 2021. Um, yeah. So I wanted to, um, put that on to have a discussion that was promised to us at the May, May 19th board meeting.
Okay. So that doesn't pertain. So let's go back to the point of order. Okay. There's a delay here. So it's, it's awkward. Uh, we will go back to trustee Guzzo's point of order. She's using 9.12. She's stated that agenda item, what agenda item was that? Sorry.
Agenda item 4.6 and under the bylaws, the way the notice.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I thought we were dealing with agenda item eight. No, sorry. Eight point, um.
Not 4.6.
Eight point six.
Yeah.
All right. So I have already ruled on that and it is my position and I think, uh, the legal letter that you presented to me, I'm, I'm speaking.
When did you rule on it?
I've, I was just going to get to it. Can, can you, I've sent you an email on the matter and the, and I stated that I consider the approval of the agenda whereby the matter was raised and given notice, even though we didn't discuss it, to be, to fulfilling his requirement to give notice. He further, that is trustee De Rosa, he further provided the explanatory notes seven days in advance. As such, I'm leaving it into the, on, on the agenda. in advance, as such, I'm leaving it into the, on, on the agenda. If you wish to overrule me, you're free to do so, if you, we can go to a vote.
I, I would like to object, and I'll tell you what my objection is based on, a notice of motion, and it has nothing to do with the explanatory notes, I never once raised that in my point of order, my point of order was speaking to the notice of motion, and under our bylaws, the notice of motion says that it shall be made during the approval of the agenda and added as an information item of a regularly scheduled board meeting. It shall be submitted.
Uh, point of order, point of order, trust, the chair has ruled, you can only vote on this, there's no debate on this.
It's not a debate, I'm reading, I'm reading the bylaw.
That, it doesn't matter, I've already ruled, so we can take it to a vote trustee Guzzo. So, so we will take the matter to a vote, so you're objecting, you're asking that eight point six be moved from an action item to an information item, is that correct?
I am, as a notice of motion, and I would also like you to share the legal opinion that was given to you today, um, when it speaks specifically to our ratepayers, um, because they did not get notice of this motion, and it did not follow the bylaws, and I think that all the other trustees should be given the same information.
The legal letter, was that sent out to everybody?
Mr. Chair.
Now, hold on trustee De Rosa, please bear with me here.
No problem.
Uh, I was not able to download the legal opinion, I discussed the legal opinion with trustee, uh, vice chair Duert, who provided me with some insights into it. Um, again, it's my position that the legal opinion actually supports the fact that I ruled that by approving the agenda unanimously, when trustee De Rosa gave his notice of motion, it's an acknowledgement that that particular item is on the agenda, there is no, once anybody gives a notice of motion, there's no discussion, all you need to do.
But we only got the title of it, Mr. Chair.
I got the floor.
Point of order, point of order, ten point one three says there should be no debate here, trustee Guzzo has appealed your decision, you need to take it to a vote.
Yes, correct, correct trustee De Ro, uh, trustee O'Brien, I will not take it to a vote. Trustee De Rosa.
Uh, what are we voting on, Mr. Chair?
Um, we're voting whether or not the item stays on the agenda, uh, eight point six stays on the agenda as an action item.
It stays on the agenda.
Sorry, can you clarify, Mr. Chair, it's not being taken off of the agenda, it's just being moved to information items.
That's correct, so, so the, actually what you're asking is.
It stays on the agenda as an action item.
Uh, trustee De Rosa, just, you gotta allow me to, to orchestrate this, so, we have a point of order that states that this item cannot be an action item this evening, therefore, we're voting, so, we're voting on whether or not trustee Guzzo is correct, I will take it to a vote, so the vote is that it gets moved to an information item.
Okay, we're gonna.
All right, so trustee De Rosa, you're in favor to, you're against it, is that correct?
I'm against moving it as an information item.
Again, thank you, trustee O'Brien.
Appalled.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta.
In favor, as I can't see the legal opinion, I don't know what it is, so I can't, in favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
The motion fails, we will now go back to the approval of the agenda.
Point of order, we cannot hear you.
Yeah, I can't, Mr. Chair, I can't hear you. All right, so, the, action item, trustee Guzzo's appeal, oh, my apologies, I forgot to ask the tru, the student trustees, student trustee Carata.
I'm in favor of making it an information item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Swan.
I'm in favor as well.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Thank you, motion fails, we will now move on to, uh, uh, taking a vote on the approval of the agenda, may I have a mo, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? As amended.
I'll move.
Moved by trustee De Rosa, yes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, can I add in my discussion item?
It's already been added.
Okay, thank you.
You've already added it, right?
Thank you.
So we're now voting, so excuse me.
Is that not the order, do we not have to vote on that?
So, yes, trust, trustee Agnew, I'm getting to that, so.
No, you didn't, you said that it had been added, you weren't getting to it.
Trustee Carabella added the item, we've noted it, so we're now approving the agenda as amended.
Uh, through you.
We have added the notice of motion by trustee O'Hearn Zernotta, and a discussion item by trustee Carabella, so I now have a motion on the floor.
My understanding is it has to be a two-thirds vote to have it added to the agenda, and then at that time we approve the agenda, we don't add it to the agenda and then approve it, we have to approve it being added to the agenda.
I, I, I concur.
You know what, that is correct, that is correct.
Thank you very much.
So if we can have one person talk at, 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 one, at a time, it would make my job much easier, so let's go back, so we've added the discussion, oh, sorry, the notice of motion by trustee O'Hearn Zernotta, we also are adding, or there's a motion on the floor, adding trustee Carabella's discussion on French as a discussion item. So how would you like to vote, would you like to vote on each item separately?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, through you, I need a second there for my idea of having a discussion item, and then that particular item gets voted on, and if it's two-thirds majority, it gets put on the agenda, otherwise, it will not.
Correct, which is why I asked if we wanna, all right, so.
I will second the motion.
So, moved by trustee Carabella, seconded by trustee De Rosa, I will now take a vote, trustee De Rosa.
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Um, student trustee Carata.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, uh, you forgot trustee Bambra, Bambra.
My apologies, trustee Bambra.
In favor.
All right, so we have, all right, so the motion, or the, the notice to add to the agenda passes, correct? That's right. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move it.
Moved by trustee O'Brien.
I will second.
Seconded by trustee De Rosa, I will now take it to a vote. Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee Zernotta.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi, in favor, student trustee Carata.
In favor.
Student trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee, student trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Motion carries. Declaration of conflict of interest, are there any declarations this evening? Seeing none, we will move to agenda item six, six point one, approval of the minutes of June second, twenty twenty, regular board meeting, are there any errors, additions or?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a, a, a comment on the content of the minutes.
Apologies, I skipped guys, so we're gonna have to go back to presentation, you got me all riled up. Um, so, going back, presentation, agenda item four point one, math action plan update, superintendent Porcassen, could you please lead this discussion?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you, and good evening, everyone, it's, uh, my great pleasure this evening to, um, welcome back to the board of trustees meeting this evening, um, our HCDSB alumni, master teacher, consultant and math lead, Jackie Mickle, so I'm going to turn you over to Jackie, as you have received, uh, the math action plan update, um, in your own packages, and she'll walk us through some of the highlights, and then we'll be open to your questions. Over to you, Jackie.
Good evening, everybody, um, I'm going to share my screen so that, um, we can just go through this quick PowerPoint presentation together, so you'll just have to let me know if it does not actually come up. Uh, hmm, sorry. Hmm, apparently I have multiple presentations here, and I'm just making sure that this is the right one. Okay, um, before I begin, I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight and to provide you, uh, with an update on some of the projects, uh, that took place in the current school year. Um, this year, we ran six projects, uh, that involved educators from kindergarten to grade eight. From September to December, we facilitated seventeen professional learning sessions, um, that involved two hundred and thirty-eight teachers, and if we assume each of these classes had roughly twenty students, um, we can estimate that we impacted potentially four thousand seven hundred students in the learning that we did, um, this year. Um, tonight, I'm gonna briefly speak to you about two of our larger projects, that would be the mathematics monitoring project, as well as the MathUp school project that we have. Um, we recognize that many of us were taught math in a way that, um, is different than what we're doing now. Um, one of the focuses of the mathematics monitoring project is to support teachers in deepening their understanding of how students develop strategies, um, and understanding necessary, I'm sorry, and the understanding's necessary to develop mathematical proficiency. Throughout the project, um, we focused on the importance of developing computational fluency and the use of models to support kids in visualizing the math that they're actually doing. Um, within this project, we worked with five schools, and these were five schools, um, that had coaches assigned to them, we knew that this was gonna be really impactful in the work that we were doing. Um, there were fifty-four teachers involved, we ran three sessions for primary and three sessions for junior teachers, knowing that we had to tailor the learning to the needs that, um, came out in the data, we were also able to run two in-school moderating sessions that allowed us to, um, work with the teachers at the schools to analyze, um, to analyze, sorry, student data, and the potential number of students impacted in this project is one thousand three hundred fifty. Um, just to go back to a couple of the things that we talked about in the fall, um, when I was speaking to you then, a hundred and eight primary students were interviewed, um, in this project, and we were really looking to understand what these students understood about the foundational facts necessary, uh, in being successful in mathematics. Just to run you through some of the, um, some of the larger findings that we found, um, approximately a third of all grade one students in the study or the project could not supercharge beyond four, um, that might not mean a lot to, to you that aren't immersed in this work, but that's, that's a pretty interesting finding, also they had difficulty adding plus one minus one, plus one minus two, um, again, it might not mean a lot, but these are some foundational facts that kids need to have mastery over in order to move ahead. Um, in grade two, almost half the kids had difficulty counting forwards from a number other than one, so if we asked them to start at seven to count forwards, that, that proved to be difficult. Uh, they also had difficulty counting at, um, starting at number eighteen, once they got to ten, they zoomed through, but that was interesting finding for us as well. Um, very interesting to us was that thirty out of thirty-nine grade three students were still counting on their fingers to answer a question, um, such as nine plus six, so we used this information and we projected it on to Dr. Alex Lawson's, uh, Numeracy Continuum, and we really hoped to support teachers in understanding where some of these kids, uh, learning might be a little fragile, how we can support them, um, intentionally with the activities and the instruction that we provide in classroom, so this continuum, as I mentioned before, um, was at the heart of the work that we did with the teachers in this project. Um, what you see on the screen now is the results of a coaching cycle that took place at one of the schools that were involved in the monitoring project. Um, this teacher had interviewed three students, um, and had found the data on those three students in her class so valuable that she conducted interviews with the rest of her kids, um, thinking that this was, this was information that she should have on all of her learners in grade one and two. Um, the pre-data shows that the kids were very much rooted in the counting phase, which is absolutely appropriate for this age group, but what you look see in the post-data is that she started to move her kids through the phases of counting, and that's exactly what we're looking for in this project, is that teachers start using this continuum to inform the instruction in the class, and this is a classic example of, of the, the positive work happening between coaches and teachers, um, and the work that the continuum is doing in helping us, um, make decisions that are responsive and developmentally appropriate. We also talked in the fall about the junior interview that had a multitude of questions, but this one really stood out to us, um, that ninety, um, ninety of our students, out of ninety of our students, seventy-nine had difficulty answering this when we asked them to do it mentally. Results that we got, majority were, uh, three hundred and ninety-eight or three hundred and two as the answers. This really was striking to us, and we took this back and started to work with our teachers to analyze why this might be happening, why were students struggling in applying mental math strategies, and why were students really struggling with counting practices as well? So we used Alex Lawson's continuum to strike the conversation with junior teachers, specifically around counting strategies, but also around the derived facts, what could it be that our students were potentially missing that were hindering their understanding and not allowing them to work proficiently with some of the math facts that they needed to be working with? This is a sample of evidence that we collected from one of the ju, junior teachers involved in the study, um, it might be hard for you to see, but on the left, we have a student that is using the standard algorithm, to check their work, they use the inverse operation, which is what most of us did, um, when we were growing up, if we were asked to check our work, you'll see the picture at the top really bears no meaning, um, on the work that the student did with the numbers. Fast forward six to eight weeks, this is how the teacher moved this student's thinking forward, what you see on the left is a student that is, yes, still using the algorithm, which is absolutely fine, but also has different models to communicate and to work through with their thinking, the student's decomposing numbers is showing that they understand the operations on a deeper level, so this is just the result of a teacher that is intentionally supporting students and working with strategies and models. Visualization has been key to the work we're doing in our projects, whether it's MathUp or monitoring, um, John Van de Wall has said, um, in order for kids to be able to be successful in math, they have to be able to really picture and visualize what they're doing with the symbols, and this is an example of how these kids are really learning to think through the models. Um, what we also did this year is, we realized the impact that our project was having, um, for the teachers that were involved in the monitoring, and we quickly realized that one year in the monitoring project wasn't enough, um, what we're really after in this project is, um, is ensuring permanent change in what we do in the classroom and how we think about student work. This is a sample of a teacher who's, was involved in the monitoring project last year and continued working in a coaching cycle, um, with one of our coaches, and she was a little bit shocked when she saw this student data, uh, at the onset of their work together, I think she was expecting to see, um, more models and strategies used, um, but what they did is they set out on a very intentional. But what they did is they set out on a very intentional plan to use number strings -- this is just gonna animate it -- to use number strings and models to support kids, starting where they are. So, we used a really asset lens to begin the work where the kids were. And what she saw as a result at six to eight weeks was this, and you can specifically see that they were going after a foundational fact of making combinations of 10. You can see kids understanding some of the more important properties of addition, and that's that of commutative property, being able to move numbers around. She was just completely gobsmacked by this, and I don't -- I was too, and I think it's just a testament to the work our coaches and teachers are doing together and a testament to the work teachers are engaging and the learning they're doing through the monitoring Stephen Katz, one of the educators that we often follow, says principal leadership is second to only classroom teaching in terms of the impact it has on student learning and achievement. This is why we invested in MathUp School two years ago, because we knew the impact that our administrators could have on the student achievement in mathematics. The goal of MathUp, just to refresh your memories, is to just provide principals with a means to collect evidence around student number sense and flexibility. So, it coincides with some of the goals outlined in our Math Action Plan. Through the MathUp, we're able to provide principals with professional development that is tailored to their needs, so that they can support their teachers in the work that we're doing. Throughout the MathUp Classroom Resource, administrators are able to access professional learning that's embedded, so that they can lead conversations with educators regarding additive reasoning, as well as the importance of using models to support conceptual understanding of the operations and the relationships among numbers. So, all of our administrators are involved in this project, and as I mentioned, we were able to provide three separate professional learning sessions just for administrators this year. And if we think about the impact these administrators have back at their school when they're leading these types of sessions at their professional -- at their staff meetings or divisionals, the impact based on a staff of 25 could be upwards of 1,125 teachers. And if teachers turn around and start implementing some of this learning in their classroom, we can be impacting up to 18,000 students with this learning. Some of the principal perspectives, which is extremely important. Principals we've worked with have found that the MathUp has really helped them to provide hands-on learning for teachers in their schools. Between the tasks that they're administering and the audit tasks they're doing to follow up with teachers, principals are seeing firsthand that there's an increase in models and strategies being used in the schools. Kids are not always resorting to use of the standard algorithm as their only means of communicating their understanding. From an administrator in Oakville, "MathUp has provided me with a new lens for math in terms of professional development within our school. This has opened up a whole new conversation. Our understanding as educators has changed." So, MathUp just really is supporting the work that we're doing in the monitoring, and it's really propelling these conversations forward and supporting our students in, as I mentioned, visualizing the math that they're doing. To support our principals, this is a huge undertaking that we're asking them to do. So, we pulled out the divisional leads in primary and junior, and the goal in pulling the primary and junior leads out was to inform them of the focuses -- the goal, sorry, outlined in our Math Action Plan, and also to build system capacity and teacher efficacy around models and strategies. So, we were able to involve 90 teachers in this learning. We were able to provide two professional learning sessions and potentially impact 1,800 students. Just before, I know I ran through that quickly. I know you guys have a lot to do tonight. Stephen Katz says that learning requires permanent change to what we do and what we know. Through our work and our various projects, we begin to see these -- we're beginning to see these shifts in teacher thinking. Based on student work and teacher feedback, we are confident that the work we are doing in our system is having an impact on student achievement, on well-being, on engagement in math and mathematics. Thank you very much for letting me present some of our updates from the mathematics projects this year.
Thank you very much, Consultant Jackie Mickle. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I'll open it up for discussion. Are there any questions by trustees for either Superintendent Porcasen or Consultant Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Thank you, Superintendent Porcasen and Jacqueline, for an excellent presentation. I love math, always loved math. It's one of the few courses that I didn't get a lot of detentions in, so it's a speechbox for me. What I would like to know is, so I'm at the tail end of the baby boomers. I'm a parent who have two kids in elementary school. I have -- I've taken Calculus I and II, I've taken four university statistics courses, passed them all. I use math every single day, all day. My child in grade one comes to me with a math problem, and I have to start Googling terms and the new methods, which I think is fantastic, because it's developing their cognitive skills in a different way, where we were -- we learned math based on memory and repeating a certain pattern, and they're doing it by developing their cognitive skills, which is gonna help them in other areas. I think this is fantastic. So, going back to the help for parents, is it possible -- I know that this is a big program, and it takes time to roll out. Is it possible down the road to get tutorial courses, just small YouTube, one, two-minute videos, that parents can use as a resource? Because they will have to help their children with math, and if the parents can get up to speed and learn along with them, it will help their children progress.
Any other questions? Any other questions again?
Through you.
Yes, go ahead, Superintendent Porcasen.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge Trustee Murphy's question with regard to parent tutorials. Thank you very much for the suggestion. We think it's a great idea, and certainly now, since all of our parents have been brought into our virtual learning environments through distance learning, it's all the more an opportunity for us to get together and make sure that our parents are on board with the learning. And so, it is something that we are definitely looking forward to and something that we were actually going to do prior to the school closure period, but definitely something that we hope to engage our parents in in the future. So, thanks again for your kind acknowledgment of Jackie's work and also for the suggestion we look forward to making that happen in the new school year.
Thank you, Superintendent Porcasen. If there aren't any other questions, I will go back to Item -- oh, trustee O'Hern Zer Nata, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and Jackie, and Superintendent Porcasen. So, well done. And usually, I like to lend -- end presentations with saying, "If you need anything," or, you know, "Come to us as a Board of Trustees, and we'll see if we can help you."
Thank you for those kind words. Are there any other questions? Since there are no other questions, I will go back to Agenda Item 5 to Agenda Item 6.1. Approval of the minutes of June 2, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. Trustee Guzzo, do you have a point of order, or is it an addition, deletion, or correction?
It's a point of order and a deletion. Under 15.3 Content of Minutes, it talks about minutes of meetings of every committee and board meeting shall contain the following information: the name of the body of the meeting, the date of the meeting, whether the meeting was regular or special meeting, the name of each trustee who disclosed any interest in any matter on the agenda of such meeting, an identification of the matter in which the trustee disclosed the interest, and if the public was not excluded from the meeting, the general nature of the interest disclosed, the names of the trustees, senior staff, external consultants, board auditors, or board solicitors, the resolutions and recommendations adopted by the board, the time of adjournment. On our board minutes, if you take a look at our minutes, sorry, just one second here. I've got them right here. At when we get to -- where is it here? When we get to the adjournment of the minutes at 10:30, when it was no longer allowed to go forward, there's still more information that was inserted into the minutes, and I'm not sure how that can happen or how we can pass these minutes with that information there, because none of that was read in public, and it wasn't part of the meeting. Therefore, we cannot pass minutes to a meeting when that information didn't happen. That happened after the fact, so they should not be included in the minutes.
I agree with that, trustee Guzzo. So, do you wish to put forward a motion to amend the minutes and bring them back at a later date? Is that your motion?
Well, actually, it's more of a point of order, but if you think that a motion's what needs to be done.
Well, you have to move that those minutes aren't acceptable. If they're not acceptable, then we have to move to defer to a later date.
Okay, so then I would request that the minutes be reflective of actually what happened at the minutes in the meeting.
Correct.
And have anything past that taken out.
Thank you. So, we need to review the minutes again. So, we will do that. So, you're moving that they be deferred to a later date after they are reviewed and edited?
No, I don't think they need to be done. I think it's just simply where it adjourned, it just ends there, and everything else is taken out, and we can pass the minutes as amended.
So, you're asking to -- so, hang on a second now. So, you're asking to cut out part of the minutes as recorded now, and you wish to do that by just cutting it off, which we can't do. So, what I can do, and what our bylaws allow us to do, is to bring it back after what you're suggesting is being added or has taken place. So, I--
Mr. Chair, we've never done that before. When we've removed something out of an agenda, I mean, out of minutes, we've passed it based on amendment, and then it's been voted on. So, it says under -- just before 10.8, it says, "The chair called for a vote on number 33/20. The vote was not unanimous, therefore, the meeting had to adjourn." That was the end of the meeting. Nothing else took place after that.
I understand that, but you cannot change the minutes here tonight. They have to be go back, they have to be vetted, and then we will bring them back for a later date. We've done this before more than once, where the minutes were incorrect and we had to amend them. So, we need a motion to defer approval of the minutes of June 2 to a later date, after which time they are amended. So, can you have a -- are you moving that?
I know, I'm actually -- my motion is, is to amend the minutes.
That's what I'm saying. So, trustee Guzzo, you're moving to amend the minutes. So, you're the mover. I need a seconder.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Agnew. I will now take it to a vote. Trustee De Rosa.
Can we have a discussion just for a minute?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, sorry, I had my hand up.
I wasn't -- I -- so, hey, oh, sorry, I do. My apologies. So, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had other meetings that have ended, and then if when information items weren't able to be done, but they were reflected in the minutes, that that's what happened. And I think also there has been moments where notice of motions have also not been able to be read, because the meeting was adjourned, but then they were in the minutes and presented the way they are in this particular--
Correct. So, do you have a point of order?
Well, we can get clarification on that from Rosie, or, I mean, this is what I think is the usual practice.
So, usual practice doesn't mean that it meets within our bylaws. I agree with trustee Guzzo that the minutes have to reflect exactly what took place. So, the motion we have on the table, if there is any other discussion, I will entertain any further discussion on this matter. I see that there is trustee De Rosa, so we need to -- trustee De Rosa, can you weigh in on this, or you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. If the minutes are not agreeable, they have to be brought back, reviewed, and then brought--
Trustee De Rosa, like, we can't have somebody being muted here. So, trustee De Rosa, are you there?
This happens to me, and this is no allusion to anything, but it happens to me extremely frequently, and in particular, when I'm trying to make--
All right, so can you just please try again, if it happens again?
My point, Mr. Chair, because I want to be crisp and expedient. At the end of the day, we are proposing to change minutes on the fly. These minutes, at the very least, if they're not agreed with, they need to be brought back and then come back for approval at a later date. So--
But that's the motion on the floor.
I understand.
All right. So, if there aren't any other questions or discussion on this item, I will take it to a vote. Trustee Murphy, go ahead. You have -- sorry?
Can you repeat the vote? What's the topic?
So, that we bring back the minutes of June 2 after they've been reviewed and corrected for authenticity, because they are a legal binding document after they're completely completed and passed. So, trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back to the fact of -- in address what trustee Carabella said. I only know of two other times where this has happened. That doesn't make it right. Lots of things have come up, and unfortunately, you know, clearly, we're not all versed on our bylaws, but our bylaws are very clear. It doesn't address dealing with anything that was not dealt with at the meeting, and to add anything in that happens after the fact or that's on emails was not in the public. And that's the whole point of meeting minutes, is it has to reflect what was done in public.
Sorry, you're absolutely right, trustee Guzzo, and that's why I ruled that we move this matter or defer approval of the June 2, 2020 minutes. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to clarify, so I can understand, does that mean also the miscellaneous information will be removed from the minutes?
Yes, anything that took place afterwards would then be vetted, and we will review them according to the tapes, I would think, correct? To see what took place exactly, and then we'll bring them back amended to the board for approval.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just for clarity for trustee Murphy, miscellaneous information is actually included in the board minutes, and they are meeting minutes, so they're just put into this to be -- but they're also already available on all the websites.
Correct. Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Murphy, do you have a supplementary?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you're up again?
No, I'm done, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we have a mover and a seconder to defer the minutes of June 2, 2020 Regular Board Meeting, subject to vetting them or correcting them and bringing them back at a later date. I will take the matter to a vote now. Trustee De Rosa, are you in favor of bringing them back?
So, what are we voting on? We're voting on--
So, you're voting on bringing back the minutes at a later date after they've been corrected?
If they need to be corrected.
If they need to be corrected, correct. So, we're going to vet them for authenticity, after which time we'll bring them back.
Okay, I can't oppose that. I am in favor.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zer Nata?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Student trustee-- Student Trustee Caratao?
Favor.
Trustee, Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Student Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Motion carries. The minutes of the June second regular board meeting...
Trustee Murphy's in favor also.
Trustee Murphy, my apology.
It's okay, I'm used to being the ugly stepchild.
Okay, uh, Trustee, uh, Carabella, yes?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to also ask something about the minutes, so it can also go with them, with the referral. Um, so, it sometimes mentions there at who was at the board office, um, and I'm wondering if everyone that's at the board office is actually listed on the minutes? Or if there's any...
Okay, so we will, we will also review that. So, let's add that item, that is review who is present at the board office during the regularly scheduled board meetings. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, um, just as a clarification, it's been brought to my attention that the minutes actually say who's in the boardroom as opposed to who's at the board office. Right? So, in any event, as we vet those minutes of June the second twenty-twenty, we will also review that element. Thank you. So, the motion passes that the, uh, minutes of June the second twenty-twenty regular board meeting...
I have my hand up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Agnew?
Uh, I'm just curious, and I'm glad you clarified boardroom attendance versus board office attendance, but I'm wondering if Trustee Carabella could just perhaps explain, um, you know, why that, that information is relevant?
Uh, Trustee Carabella, did you wish to address that?
Uh, no, not really. Just that, uh, it just, as, as we're saying, they're legal documents, they say where people are, and it's just a question I had for review, thank you.
Okay, so for clarity then, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, it'll be for boardroom attendance then? Not for office attendance?
Well, I, I don't need, I don't know, uh, Trustee Agnew, um, let me check into that from a legal perspective, and then we will get back, so we'll report on that.
I'm just curious what their reason is.
So, I, i- it's not relevant what the reason is, so let's just deal with the fact that it's been asked, and we can look at the legality of it, and then when we report back with the minutes, we can also report on whether, whether or not it's necessary to denote who and, uh, and where the person is physically. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to Agenda Item Seven, Business arising from the previous, uh, uh, meetings. A summary has been, uh, provided for you, um, and, uh, as such, we will now move on to Action Item Eight, uh, Agenda Item Eight Point One, renaming of Jean Vany Catholic Secondary School. I will read the motion, after which time I will ask for a, a mover and a second there. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the name of Saint Francis, Xavier Catholic Secondary School. May I have a mover?
I'll move, De Rosa.
Moved by Patrick Murphy, or Trustee Murphy, seconded by Trustee Duarte. Um, is there any discussion? Uh, Superintendent Kroll, do you wish to add anything to this particular item? Can you maybe perhaps provide us, provide, um, the background and how we arrived at this name, um, just as a summary, please?
Of course. Um, so, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I'm pleased to bring the following information to the board. So, following the June second board meeting, Director Daley had sent a letter to Bishop Crosby indicating the prioritized list of names that we discussed at the June second meeting. So, we received correspondence from the bishop's office last week, we received a phone message and then an email, and finally received the official letter from the bishop yesterday. You'll see that those two letters are attached as Appendix A and Appendix B. So, I'm happy to report that Bishop Crosby has responded approving the name of Saint Francis Xavier Catholic, Catholic Secondary School, and so the motion for you this evening is to consider approving the name Saint Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School as the new name for Jean Vany Catholic Secondary School, and as always, I'm happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Superintendent Kroll? Uh, Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor, so I'm not quite sure, are you addressing what Superintendent Kroll has just, uh, given us, or, or is it a separate matter?
It, it was actually to deal with the previous thing, however, um, I'm glad to see that Bishop Crosby, uh, has weighed in. That's awesome.
Thank you. So, it's just a comment then?
It's going to be renamed. No, it was actually for the previous, you just missed it.
Uh, I didn't miss it, I wasn't giving it, it wasn't given to me, thank you. So, Trustee Murphy, you wish to address this and speak to this particular item?
I have my hand up, Mr. Chair.
Um...
Yeah, or, uh, uh, Trustee Duarte, I'll, I can defer to Trustee...
All right, so then why don't you split it? Both of you make a comment, or if you wish to make a comment. So, Vice Chair Duarte, Duarte, you have the floor first, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, it's, it's a beautiful day for Milton, beautiful day for the community, uh, of JV and all the feeder schools. I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process, uh, in choosing the name of Saint Francis Xavier, and the X, as the, as the bishop pointed out, should be read as, uh, as an Z, Saint Francis Xavier, and, uh, I'm very proud, uh, to be part of the community and want to thank everybody involved in, in this process, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Vice Chair Duarte. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Chair, um, I, I believe that we came together as a community and, um, and as, as a board with, um, various members, uh, who were on the committee, and, and, uh, we reached out to the community, the community rallied to turn, uh, a negative into a, a positive over a, a very short period of time, um, and there was, um, a good community building and consensus throughout, so, um, overall, a very positive experience, and I think it's, it's a very good day for Milton and for the Halton Catholic District School Board. Thank you for your support, everyone.
Thank you, Trustee, uh, Murphy. Trustee Care, Student Trustee Caratao, you'd like to weigh in on this, can you, you have the floor?
Of course, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know what I can say that hasn't already, um, been said, but I think it's most important is that the students and the people of this board have already spoken. Uh, this board has responded and taken action, and so has our bishop, His Excellency, uh, Douglas Crosby. So, I think today we can finish the work that this board has started in the process to rename, uh, Jean Vany Catholic Secondary School, because it's not very long ago that students and parents came up to us, uh, with their concerns that the school bore the name of a proven abuser, and I'm glad that we've taken the action on that with, uh, Trustee Murphy's motion and all the good work that the School Renaming Committee and Superintendent Kroll, the staff, parents, and students on the committee have done. We've, uh, when they voted to finalize the decision, uh, the, the people of our community have made a very clear-cut statement in favor of the name Saint Francis Xavier, which I think is an excellent name, and our bishop has approved as well. So, I'm sure, and if you're not sure, I, I encourage you to support, uh, this name change, it'll be a really great day, a redemptive day for the people of Milton and for the school board, and I guess the students of that school will learn to live the Xavier way as well. So, please, uh, adopt these changes to the board.
Thank you, uh, Student Trustee Caratao, um, well said. Uh, I'll move on to Trustee O'Hearn Zernota, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll pass in the sake of time, my sentiments have been already discussed in a different way, so I'll pass.
Thank you very much, uh, Trustee O'Hearn Zernota. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, I too will, um, I'll reserve my comments, I, I just, great job, everybody.
Thank you, Trustee, um, Agnew. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, congratulations to everybody. Uh, I would like to, uh, respectfully request that you take it to a vote and get on with it.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Kroll, I, I wish to commend you on a job well done. I think it was very inclusive, it came to the right conclusion, so I will take this matter to a vote now. So, Trustee De Rosa, are you in favor of the name change?
I am in favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Student Trustee Caratao from Milton?
Very much in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Uh, Janet O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. We will now move on to Agenda Item Eight Point Two. Um, Policy Chair Guzzo, can you please read the motions? The motion?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy I dash zero six delegation to the board be approved as amended.
Seconded by? Are you there?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. I will take it to a, uh, to a vote. Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Or the vote, yes. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Student Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Uh, Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Student Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Motion carries. Uh, Policy I twenty-eight Electronic Meetings, um, uh, Policy Chair Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of Policy Committee that Policy I dash two-eight Electronic Meetings be approved as amended.
Uh, moved by Trustee Guzzo, can I have a second there on that motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, I will take the matter to a vote. Um, Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Student Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Student Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
The motion, or the, the policy, uh, passes unanimously. Uh, um, Action Item Eight Point Four, um, Policy Chair, Trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy IV dash zero-two, outlet facility enhancements, maintenance, and security be approved.
Can I have a second there to that motion?
De Rosa.
Trustee De Rosa? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will take it to a vote. Trustee, uh, De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Mar, uh, Du, Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Student Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Student Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Policy V, um, four, um, passes. Um, Policy Eight Point Five V sixteen Copyright Visual Identity and Intellectual Property Protection, Policy Chair, Trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you. May be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy V dash one-six Copyright Visual Identity and Intellectual Property Protection be approved as amended.
Can I have a second there for that motion?
Carabella?
Trustee Carabella? I will not, is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, I will take the matter to a vote. Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota? Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Student Trustee Caratao?
In favor.
Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Motion is adopted. Uh, moving on to Eight Point Five, um, Eight Point Six, my apologies. Bear with me. Um, Trustee De Rosa, could you please speak to this particular motion?
Read it out?
Yes, I will read it out. I, I was offering Trustee De Rosa to read it out. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees direct secretary, director of the Halton Catholic District School Board to provide the Board of Trustees with a report on school-generated funds, explaining the program and including school-generated funds reports from all schools with a sum, summary of the SGF re, report totaling all schools for the years ending eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty, as well as the school budgets for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, at the September twenty-two, twenty twenty regular board meeting. The total SGF summary report as shown below will show opening balances at the beginning of the year, revenues and expenses by source for the year, and ending balances at the end of the year by category with a description of what is included in each category. Um, be it further resolved that the list of cash balance, balances, including a physical account of cash on hand, were applicable as, as at August thirty-first, twenty twenty by school, be provided at the September twenty twenty-two, or twenty-two, twenty twenty regular board meeting. Um, having read the motion, uh, it's moved by Trust, who, can I have a mover, a mover on this particular motion?
Um, I move it.
Moved by Trustee De Rosa? Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by O'Hearn Zernota? Uh, is there any discussion? Our Trustee De Rosa, you can lead the discussion.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to speak to, um, first of all, uh, I issued yesterday a simplification of this, uh, um, Mr. Chair. Uh, would you like me to make that simplification now, and then I can speak to the motion?
So, so, no, Trustee De Rosa, um, the simplification cannot be added at this particular time, let's bring it to a, uh, to a discussion, and then if you wish to make friendly amendments to your own motion?
Yeah.
We can do that after it's been, uh, it goes through a discussion. So, I will open the floor to Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm just going back to, uh, nine point two, one, two of the bylaws. Uh, since the meeting minutes were not approved, um, therefore, this motion no longer exists on the meeting minutes, so I once again raise my concerns in regards to the fact that our ratepayers had, did not get access to this until Friday, um, which should they choose, and it's not, it's not about this particular motion as opposed to it being about the process. Um, ratepayers are allowed to delegate... Ratepayers are allowed to delegate, and delegation, as we just approved the agenda, delegations have to be submitted seven days in advance. However, our board agenda isn't available until four days in advance, which then means that our public was not aware of this motion. It could be any motion. It could be... It could be something that involves optional programming. It could be something that involves busing. And what we've done is, is we've circumvented the fact that our ratepayers and the fact that the Education Act talks about our meetings being public and this information discussed publicly and available publicly, and that did not need this. And now we have not passed minutes where this was added and after the adjournment. Therefore, I once again stress that this motion should not be heard, and I implore you to do the right thing as we are not following process, and we are definitely not giving our ratepayers access to our motions, whether it be this one or any future motion, in being able to speak to it or being able to know what's happening.
So I can address one aspect of your particular point of order, and that is that upon approval of the agenda, which we've done earlier, and you raised the point of order, that was defeated, and because that was defeated, the agenda item stays on the table, or it stays as an action item. I will now bring it to... Or open it for any further discussion. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and I got a ton of questions, so I'll start with one.
Go ahead.
I'm curious.
You have the floor.
Yep, thank you. I guess I would like to understand from Trustee De Rosa, prefacing this by saying that as all trustees are aware, we actually have no control over the SGFs, that that discretion lies with the individual schools, recognizing that this is a revenue line, but not something that we need to have any kind of fiscal ownership over. I'm curious what you're looking for when you are asking for details in each of the categories. First of all, I think all this information is readily available on each and every school website. And then it is broken down by category as well on those websites. So what is it that you're needing to know within each of those individual categories? I think the categories are fairly self-explanatory. So is there... Are you looking for more information within those categories?
Thank you for the question.
Trustee De Rosa, can you address that question from Trustee Agnew?
There's a number of components in that question, so I will try to, first of all, say that this is a a motion which is directed to ask for information on a consolidated basis. I recognize that there is independent reports, and our policies and procedures demand that the schools prepare independent reports. And as a matter of fact, they demand that they report it to the superintendent. But nowhere is there a consolidated report, a consolidated report that we are aware of. So this is asking for a roll-up of all of the 61 schools or 62 schools. Secondly, this is information on the items of SGF. Now, I want to remark that SGF is a, first of all, defined to include many things other than just school council funds raised by school councils. In fact, I would remark that just by looking at some of the reports on a test basis, the school council funds actually represent a very small portion of the total consolidated reports. Things like club and activity fees are a major portion, athletics. There's categories like commissions, departments, administration. So there's some degree of clarity that needs to be brought to this, let alone the fact that we need to be able to see consolidated numbers. This is a report which is given the board the right to receive on an annual basis in the Act, in our policies, as well as a guideline from the Ontario Association of School Business Officials, which our policies and procedures refer to as being absolutely necessary that we need to adhere to. So I am not asking for anything new. I am asking for things that are due to us. Last year, this report has eluded us. And this is the reason why I'm asking for it to be brought to the table in this motion, as well as the current one. Ultimately, the motivation behind this is that this item represents on our balance sheet anywhere between $13 and $15 million worth of revenues. And it's a material item which we need to take an interest in if we're going to do a proper evaluation of the budget that we're going to ask to approve. So ultimately, that's the end game here, is a request for information that is due to us as a board, so that we can exercise our responsibilities as mandated by the Act. So I am not... I am motivated by this simply because of the size of the item, because it's going to have to be included in our financial statements according to law, and the reason behind that is very simple, is that the schools and the school councils are not legally legal entities. They cannot hold assets. So the responsibility for holding and the custody and the stewardship of those assets falls at the board level. So by virtue of that fact, we need to take an interest in it, and we need to be informed as to what's in it. This is not about, in any way, shape, or form, about control or trying to direct the parent councils' activities. In fact, I would suggest to you that if we understand better what's in it, we'll be in a better position to support the principals, and the school councils will do such a great job.
Thank you, Trustee De Rosa. Not exactly, you know, all the information I asked, but through you, Mr. Chair, may I have a follow-up?
Agnew, you have the floor for your follow-up.
Thank you. So, again, so this is probably two-part, but you're asking in this report, again, recognizing, as I said, that I know that this is revenue, I know that this is reported, but also recognizing that the ministry is very prescriptive on SGFs. But when we are saying here that we would like to see, or that you would like to see details in each of the categories, I'd like to know to what end for that?
There's no... There's no protection other than the fact.
Not done!
All right, sorry. Trustee De Rosa, you can't interject.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she had finished asking.
No, she's not finished. So can you allow Trustee Agnew to finish her questions, please? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So my concern with this is that if we're going to be asking for extreme detail in each of these categories, so a detail around commissions, a detail around, you know, extra external charities, whatever that might be, so to what end? So why is it not enough for us to get a report that, as you said, you need to see? A report that's consolidated, that has all the information, or sorry, that has all of the totals, so we get a consolidated report? It's just going to add up to the amount that we already have with a breakdown by category, but why do we need to have the detail within the categories? Again, to what end? It's not for us to decide whether or not too much has been spent in athletics, or too much has been spent in, you know, whatever that might be. That's not for us as trustees to have control over. So I'm struggling with the need to have that much detail versus just having a summary report done with the simple SGF roll-ups.
Well, there's a number of...
All right, thank you. So can you address that, Trustee De Rosa? Just bear with me. Let me direct traffic, so you now get to respond to Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. First of all, the detail is requested to the report preparers at the school level. So the detail is available. It is prescribed according to the policy. It is prescribed according to the Ontario Association of School Business Officials, which is supported by the Act. Now, there is no rhyme or reason. The only, very basically, is to try to get an understanding of what this program is all about, so that we can substantiate the inclusion of a material amount in the financial statements. So the motivation is really understanding, Trustee Agnew. There is no other nefarious reason behind it other than to try to understand what these items are. And I think as a board, we have a responsibility. If we're going to approve a budget with $15 million that is impacted by this, I think it's important for us to have those details. Right now, I would inform you that the only way on the financial statements, on the income statement, on the revenue side, this item, SGF, school-generated funds, appears as one total. Right? It appears, I believe, in the last year.
Thank you. So I think you've made your point. So, Trustee De Rosa.
No, I'd like to conclude just by saying one thing, is that we can see the revenue amount, but we don't see the related expenses in the expense categories. So the point is understanding and nothing else.
Thank you. Student Trustee Caratow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is mainly for Trustee De Rosa. Now, Trustee Agnew has asked, basically, my first question on why Trustee De Rosa seeks this information, and I think I understand his goal. However, I think that the proposal he has lacks some details. If the desire really is to consolidate the data from a number of independent reports and go into detail, I feel like the SGF information would be more useful to this board if it were specific. For instance, I think that if you really want to get into the details, then I think clubs and activity fees should be broken up by club, like, for instance, by which club, and departments should be broken up into each department's financial information. Say math, or science, or Canadian World Studies, rather than just the total.
So can I interject for a minute, Student Trustee Caratow? That's exactly what Trustee De Rosa is asking for, simply because the report, what you're alluding to is exactly what comes from each school to the superintendent, and from the superintendent to superintendent of Financial Services, right up to the secretary-director.
Of course. Essentially, my question really is just for Trustee De Rosa. Do you seek a more comprehensive list of information like I've just described? Because I believe that it's a choice between one or the other, just a summary report of the very basics or a very detailed one. I just want to know which one you're leaning towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. I... I'm looking for a roll-up of the detail that exists at the school level. This is the spirit of this motion. And to your point, when you started describing, you started describing your understanding of this motion, to the chair's point, that's exactly what this motion is after.
If I got the... Thank you very much, Trustee De Rosa. Trustee Guzo, you have the floor. Trustee Guzo?
Mr. Chair, I think I had my hand up a long time back.
You're next, Trustee Duarte.
There's still another person in front of you, Trustee Duarte. So, through you, Mr. Chair. My question is, so in your comments in regards to this motion, your rationale, you say it's to make good budget decisions. However, we can't project these costs. This is parents fundraising money. This is money that the school, they set goals at the beginning of the year with their student or parent councils or school councils. They set out to raise these funds. It's not a prescribed amount. We don't know from year to year what that looks like. We have rollover. We have parents that leave the school and go on to high school, or go on to university, whatever it may be. So one year we may know that it's, it might be $15 million that it's school-generated funds. Next year, it might be $10 million. It's not a fixed number. We can't use it, and I believe you use the term "to make good budget decisions." I have to say, and...
Trustee Guzo, can I just add a piece of information?
I'm not finished.
No, no, no. I'm trying to get a clarification from your question.
I'm not done, but I'm not done speaking. So how can you get a clarification if you don't let me finish?
Mr. Chair, I would suggest you let her finish her question, if I may suggest to you.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
So I would just like to maybe put it to Superintendent Loffs. When it comes to school-generated funds, the ministry is very clear, from my understanding, in regards to how school-generated funds can be used, how they can be raised. And our policies talk a little bit about it as well. But really, at the end of the day, all we're required to do is report it in our final budget. But in our last budget that we just submitted to the ministry, the reason why it's not included in there, because it's not ministry funds, and it's not something that we can project. And they have no say, nor are we required to spend it in a certain way, except for what the ministry dictates in regards to how school-generated funds are to be utilized.
Mr. Chair, I think the question's... So, hang on. Trustee De Rosa, Trustee De Rosa, Trustee Guzo isn't finished, and then I have a clarification question. So, Trustee Guzo, go ahead.
My question is to Superintendent Loffs in regards to school-generated funds, what the ministry says and the fact that it's not projected.
Trustee, or sorry, Superintendent of Financial Services, Aaron Loffs, go ahead.
And if you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Guzo, you are correct. How we treat it in our budget is we, if you can actually look at the report tonight, there's a school-generated funds line, one for revenue, one for expenses, they're exactly the same amount, they add up to zero, for the reason that we can't necessarily forecast how much will be donated to us in a year. So for us, it does have no impact on our board budget decisions. If you look at our statements, our EBITDA statements, it's actually not even available for us for compliance. So any excess funding that is available at the end of the year, we must put into a reserve account to be redistributed back to the schools. So it has... We cannot use that money.
Thank you. So, hang on. Trustee De Rosa, bear with me. I said I had a comment. So, Trustee Guzo, what I was trying to allude to is that what Trustee De Rosa is asking for is a report of past years, not a projection forward. That was the only thing that I was trying to clarify.
I will make a comment, Mr. Chair.
No, no, you don't have the floor yet. You don't have... Excuse me. Trustee De Rosa.
Yes.
I'm sorry. You do not have the floor yet. Trustee Guzo still has the floor. So, Trustee Guzo, go ahead.
Thank you. So just my follow-up question is, there's been some comments and alluded that, there's been some people that have alluded that school-generated funds may have an impact on our GSN. Now, my question to that, and again, I think it would probably be to Superintendent Loffs, maybe even to Director Daley, that if that were the case, if the ministry was to use our school-generated funds as something that, as a calculation for our GSN, would they not have to notify us that, or make everybody aware that that could impact their our GSN? Because, again, because it's something that can't be projected, it's something that's on a year-to-year. Like, I'm just having troubles in understanding how giving this information helps us make better budget decisions when we have no control over this money. And like Superintendent Loffs just said, I think he said money going in, money coming in is the same amount as money going out. And I don't think that we want to get into the business of starting to pick apart what our schools' needs, or independent needs are, or dictating what our school councils spend their money on. But if you could just answer the question in regards to the school-generated, or the GSN piece, please.
So who would you like to address that question? Superintendent Loffs or Secretary Daley?
Superintendent Loffs, please.
All right. Superintendent Loffs, you have the floor. Go ahead.
If you, Mr. Chair. No, I actually calculated out manually last year how we calculate all our GSNs. SGF does not factor into that equation for our grants for student needs calculation. Or school-generated funds is not. I keep using the acronym, I apologize. School-generated funds does not impact the GSNs or grant for student needs calculation.
All right. Does that answer your question, Trustee Guzo?
Thank you. Yep. I'll go back in the queue.
All right, thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor. This is your second question, so it's the last one. I'm going to start proceeding as per our bylaws, and that is after your second question, which you have three minutes. proceeding as per our bylaws, and that is after your second question, which you have three minutes.
Okay, no problem. So we're gonna start following bylaws now. Okay, that's great. So, my question then, I guess, is, I'm hearing that this simply is being requested as a roll-up report, and yet we want detail by school. So it's actually not really a simple roll-up report. I envision this as being quite a lengthy report that will have each individual school broken down by category, broken down by detail within the category, and then outlining the opening balance, the revenue, the expenses, and the ending balance. To me, the roll-up is what we're seeing now, which is a total amount, expenses in, you know, revenue in, expenses out. It's a roll-up total of all of the schools' SGFs, and then that's reported. So, when you say a roll-up report, I don't think it's a roll-up report. I think it's a tedious report that is going to need to detail, like I said, every school, every category, details within those categories, again, for amounts that we have no control over, and nor can we dictate how those are spent. That is to the discretion of the principals and the councils, depending on the individual school needs. So, and I believe that, you know, trustee, or superintendent Loffs has explained the way the process goes. And I also know that internally, we have an auditing process in place for our SGFs. So I'm not sure why we're needing to see this information with that amount of detail at the board level, because it doesn't help us with any budgeting decisions.
So are you posing a question to someone, trustee Agnew?
Um...
Do you wish somebody to respond to that, to acknowledge, or what?
I don't think there's a response to it. It's a comment, I guess.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Chair Duert, can you please, you have the floor. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna take ten minutes. Sorry, five minutes. So, I did have an opportunity...
You have one minute.
Okay. I did have an opportunity to look at procedure VI59 and section eight, accountability and financial reporting board level. And then I did look at the Ontario Association of School Business Officials, and we are meeting the requirements in our reporting system right now. So, I did some extra step. I took an extra step, and I chose two random schools in Milton, and I went to their websites, and they do project, they do provide the detailed table that you see on your screen right now, of administration, athletics, fundraising, and whatever. So, all the schools have a similar kind of a format, so I'm assuming they use a similar kind of a software. So my question here is, to trustee DeRosa, is he looking to pick such reports that I have in my hand, which is presented by principals to the school councils? Is he looking to collect all the reports from all the schools in our system, and add up each subtitle, as for example, administration, athletics, fundraising? Add them up, present it as a table to the board of trustees, and is that the report you're looking for? Or are you looking for, once again, the details of the, take, for example, the fundraising cost? Do we need to know how many pizzas are bought, or how many lunch pail items are bought? So are we looking for that kind of detail, or are we looking for the table that you see in front of us, which is the sum of all the schools in the system? And I think that's a report which may be sufficient for us. So trustee DeRosa, could you, are you okay with that? Because that information is already out in the schools, in the school websites. But the details of what, how they go about getting those funds, I don't think I would be interested. I don't think parent council chairs and principals in schools are interested in. It's just gonna create confusion in Milton. But this table that you see here is a format which is open to everybody. And I'm wondering if trustee DeRosa is looking for that table, which is the sum of all the schools.
trustee DeRosa, can you respond to vice chair Duert on this particular matter?
Thank you, vice chair, or Mr. Chair, through you. The reporting in the schools right now, and I, like you, vice chair Duert, I took a sample of schools. So there's a couple of things that have come out, which is, I don't think this message has really come out clear. Let's understand each other, that this is not a discussion only and exclusively related to the parent councils. I would suggest to you, through the samples that I've seen at the schools, the fundraising and activities of the parent councils is, represents a small portion of the total, of the total activity, SGF, number one. So let's be clear on that. The school council fundraising is part of this line of thirteen million, fifteen million in our financial statements. I would also say that, yes, we're able to identify, I think the impression was left that we're able to identify the numbers on the revenue side. But certainly, we can't, if we go to our financial statements, we cannot identify specifically the expenses related to those revenues. So although we see the thirteen million, thirteen million dollar come in, we don't see it come out. I will also affirm that the report that you showed as an example, in fact, does have carry-forward balances. And I won't name the school, but just to give you a taste of what we're talking about, there's a May 31st cutoff date, forty-year. So for nine months, there was an opening balance in all of those categories of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. They took in two hundred and eighty thousand, put out two hundred and twenty-six, and are still carrying, as of the end of May 31st, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. When we talk about fundraising and the activities of the parent councils, just to make the point that it is not the line share, on a total revenue in this particular situation, a total revenue up to May the 31st of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, the parent council activity only represents nine thousand five hundred dollars. But the other categories are material. So this is not a discussion about parent councils and their activities. I think they are to be commended for their commitment and dedication. This is not about, in any way, shape, or form, exercising control over those funds. This is just about reporting responsibility. And that responsibility is mandated in the Act. It's mandated in our policies and procedures, as well as the Ontario Association of School Business Officials, which we've accepted as being the bible in developing how we do this business. Okay? So, just to clarify that, I think the issue of the budget was made a number of times, not by yourself, trustee Duert, but I think trustee Agnew. There is a requirement for the schools to submit a budget for the year. No matter how difficult it is for, to estimate fundraising, the other items, which are the line share of the issue, the other items, in fact, can be budgeted. And there is a requirement in the documentation, in the policies, to effectively, for the principal's responsibility, in conjunction with the councils, to establish an annual budget. So, I suspect that that is being done. Maybe it's not being done consistently. I don't wanna bring judgment to that. But a budget process is mandated. It's in place.
Can I have this? So trustee DeRosa, excuse me, I have to interject. And the reason I have to interject is that superintendent Loffs did address that particular issue. So the reporting of school-generated funds is an after-the-fact exercise. It's not used, it's not used in, it's mandated to be reported, but it's not used in projecting forward for the June budget estimates. I just wanted to make that clarification for you.
You are correct. I was just trying to make the point that there is a budget process that takes place. Now, regardless of the difficulty of trying to estimate what the fundraising activities are gonna be, and I acknowledge that, it's not an easy thing to do. But let's keep in mind that the fundraising activities in the whole scheme of things is a minor portion. So, I just wanted to bring up that clarification, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Have I answered your question, trustee?
Partly, but I have a follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, trustee Duert, go ahead.
If you take a look at the table which is on our screens, the club and activity fee that trustee DeRosa said, it's there. So it is a major portion. I agree, and I have this in front of me. I chose JV, for example. It's a large amount. So is it not sufficient that we take all the high schools and all the elementary schools in our system, and just add up those line-by-line items, administration, athletics, club and activity fees, and present it to the trustees as a table? And then it's already shared with everybody. It's an open item. It's just a matter of somebody picking up all the sheets and printing them together, and adding the numbers. Is that not sufficient? Why do I need to go and break down?
I would say that that is the spirit, that is the spirit of this motion.
Okay.
And in addition to that spirit, to be able to see the consolidated numbers and reports, which are due once a year, okay?
Okay.
We have the option of going into a certain degree of detail to understand where the expenses are being expensed, as well as where the revenues are coming from. Like I indicated to you, this is an item which appears on our financial statements on the revenue side and is easily identifiable. What is not identifiable is the expense side. And that's what we are trying to get an understanding of. Because when we then take a look and review the budget...
So trustee DeRosa, hang on, I'm gonna have to allow trustee Agnew to weigh in, because she has a point of order, and her point of order stems from where in our bylaws. If I have this correct, trustee Agnew, can you please weigh in? That you wish to be advised where in our bylaws, what trustee DeRosa is proposing?
No, no.
So go ahead. What is it?
What I was commenting on is that you said in the chat, you wouldn't allow another question. And I said I'd like to know in the bylaws where it says that. Ten point five says that any trustee can speak once recognized by the chair.
Not in there.
Other trustees have spoken.
Correct. It's the discretion of the chair, if we wanna move along.
Point of order, point of order. No, it's not, Mr. Chair. It doesn't say you have discretion. It says that any trustee has the opportunity to ask a question. They put their hand up and wait till you're recognized by the chair, and that if they need to, they can wait until, I can read it straight out to you if you like. I have it here in front of me.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
It says, "Any member desiring to speak shall indicate by raised hand and await recognition by the chair. Speakers may speak when recognized by the chair, and may not speak to the issue again until all other trustees who wish to speak have been recognized by the chair." I'm happy to wait in the queue.
I can't, I can't think which one it is. Trustee Agnew, so go ahead. You wanna ask another question? You're welcome to ask another question. In the meantime, I will allow...
No, I will be quite gracious, Mr. Chair, and I will allow any trustees who have not had a chance yet to ask their question to go ahead and answer a question. I will wait in the queue until it's my turn.
No, so what I was saying, so when I rolled on, that will be the last question, that wasn't saying that I was stopping discussion. What I was saying is that everybody that's had the chance to ask a first question, and then is asking a supplementary question.
Not what it said, Vince. It said that you would not allow me to ask my questions. So you can't suck and blow at the same time. I'm happy to allow the other trustees to have their say. I can wait patiently. My question is not going away. So please allow the other trustees before me who have not asked a question yet to do that, and I will wait patiently in the queue. Thank you.
So trustee Agnew, it's my understanding that I had relayed to Ms. Wynden that I was allowing your question. Do you not have that in your chat?
Yeah, I have that after you weren't allowing my question. And then we quoted the bylaw, and then you said that you would allow the question.
That's correct. All right, very good. So trustee Swan, you have the floor now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, like, I think that, I think I'm echoing a lot of what's being said, so I apologize if I'm being a little bit repetitive. The school-generated funds, to my understanding, are controlled by the principal and school councils. So the fact that we are aggregating all this data, I'm not necessarily sure. And honestly, like, who are we to make that decisions? I think that it's based on, you know, the fact that we are asking all this, we're asking data from all the schools, I think it kind of gives misleading, if that's the right word. And I just think that, just on the basis that, you know, school-generated funds, we can't really predict where, how much of these funds will be coming in next year. And it's not really part of the public funding. So I, I don't know. I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you.
To trustee Murphy, I draw trustee Agnew and trustee Guzzo, who alluded to a point of order. If you go to ten point three, open and close debate on a main motion. The mover of a duly seconded motion will open and close the debate on the motion. The mover may open debate for a time limit of five minutes, and close debate on, for a period of up to three minutes. All other members may only speak once to the motion for a period of three minutes. No member shall speak longer than three minutes to a motion without leave of the chair. This does not prohibit... Excuse me, let me finish. Can I finish?
You go ahead and finish.
Thank you. This does not prohibit a member from raising a point of privilege, a point of order, or a point of clarification.
So, point of clarification, did you close the debate, or did you close? So did you close the debate for one, and other trustees asked more than one question? And they weren't told that they couldn't have another question? So I don't understand.
I wasn't closing the debate. I was...
It feels like you're picking and choosing tonight as to when you'd like to adhere to the bylaws, and that's fine. If I don't get my question asked, it's not a problem. The stakeholders know where I stand on this. Not a problem.
Thank you. That wasn't the intent, trustee Guzzo. So I will now move it, yield the floor to trustee Murphy.
A point of privilege, sorry, but, Mr. Chair, but I had my hand at eight fifty-three.
Sorry, my apologies. You were not, I was not given your thing. You're absolutely right. It was just given to me now. So you have the floor, trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Awesome. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So, I'd like to speak to and get us back on track to why I seconded this motion. The motion in the spirit is to get a summary of the SGF funds, so a quick total of all the summaries. And it's not lost on me that some of our trustees have not been involved in school councils. I have for ten years, so I understand how the SGF is put together, what it means, what some of these line items mean. So the spirit to me of this motion is, give us a summary total. We see thirteen million dollars on our budget, and explain to us what those line items are. So if there's any more to that, that is not the spirit of my seconding this motion. And I think we're getting way off track, and maybe superintendent Loffs or you, Mr. Chair, through director Daley, could speak to this, as far as how quick. Knowing you, superintendent Loffs, you've seen the motion. You've probably got all the numbers with you right now.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Zernota. Thanks for your insight. So superintendent Loffs, can you please address trustee O'Hern Zernota's comments?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe the comment was about the timing of it, how long it would take to generate the data. We actually did an estimate within our department, and we're looking at, because they're all individual schools, all a manual calculation, and there's gonna be a lot of follow-up for the schools based on the categories, because all schools aren't gonna be categorizing the, will be regular expenses the way that it's been presented. It could take some time. So we're looking at forty to sixty hours to go through and put this together, collecting last year's data, as well as then obviously the current data.
Does that answer your question, trustee O'Hern Zernota?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Thank you very much. Trustee Murphy, you finally have the floor.
Finally, when I was younger, I had red hair. I was very sensitive to the term, the ugly, red-headed stepchild. So I've got a little bit of a chip on my shoulder. You'll have to indulge me.
You're being indulged. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. You're a kind man. I'd like to try and maybe get superintendent Loffs' comments on my understanding. So, you know, I always live by the motto, if it's measured, it matters. So there's, if we're approving a line item on the budget, that's thirteen million dollars, then we should be able to speak to it at a high level, you know, in certain terms. So when I look at this, and, don't be offended, remember I'm a sales and marketing guy. When I look at this, it's kind of a pig in a poth, right? It's not money that comes from the public. It's generated by the schools. However, it has to land in somebody's lap, in somebody's budget. Since they're not individual corporations, then it's owned by the board, and we have to approve the board's budget. So really, by default, this really lands in our lap. The money goes in, the money goes out. It has no... The money goes in, the money goes out, it has no, uh, there's no input or direction from us, there's no influence from us, yet we have to approve it, so therefore really it behooves us to.
Shouldn't be talking on that.
I know, well.
My understanding and, and, um, support of this motion would be simply due to the fact that it is a line item that we have to approve.
Or telling us you have Adam Cross.
Reasonably intelligently, but the reality is, it's, it is a pig and a poke, it's, it comes in.
He has to yield.
Sorry, we can't hear trustee Murphy speaking because, Chair, yeah, point of privilege, we can't hear trustee Murphy because the chair keeps talking. If you could turn off your microphone, that'd be great.
Would you, would you like me to start at the beginning?
Yes, I would actually.
Uh, trustee Murphy.
You know what you said.
Trustee Agnew, you're making allegations that are unfounded. I have no control over the microphone, so if the microphone is on, it's not my doing, just as a point of clarification. So trustee Murphy, can you please continue?
Certainly. Uh, so superintendent Lofts, maybe I can get your professional opinion in that the reality is, this is, it is our responsibility to approve this line item. Um, the reality is even the external auditors don't really look at this item because of the nature of it, it's, it's, uh, a high, high volume of small dollar amounts, that yes, cumulatively, it's a big number, but the nature of it, uh, makes it very difficult for them to do any, any reasonable audit. So it's really left the operations of the business to verify and to control this number, yet ultimately the responsibility comes to the board of trustees to approve this line item. Uh, is that somewhat of a fair assessment and a summarization of this line item?
Okay, so you're asking superintendent Lofts to address that particular question, trustee Murphy?
Yes, to shed some light on the reality of the fact that it is our responsibility to approve this line item, however, it is not public funds, it is funds that go in and come out through the school, and it's really up to the operations of this organization to control, verify, bet, do whatever they have to do to control those funds. However, it ends up being the ultimate responsibility of the trustees to approve it.
Correct. So, go ahead trustee, uh, superintendent Lofts, can you please address that particular question?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, just trustee Murphy, I will address a, maybe a couple of points in there. Uh, you're correct, how we, you'll see it in the budget, when we do the budget, I'll address maybe in two parts, we'll look at the budget and then the financial statements. So with the budgets, as I mentioned before, how we budget for it, it makes essentially the expenses equal to revenue, so there's no impact to the board. Uh, one thing I should mention, as far as ministry guideline with GS, or sorry, with SGF, is that SGF funds are not to be used to replace publicly funded, uh, amounts for education, so for the GSNs for example. So this is something, uh, just to clarify, uh, why the GSNs, or why SGF does not impact the GSNs, the other board cannot replace public funds for education with SGF. Um, back to the question, I guess on the whole auditing aspect of it, believe it or not, for the relatively small amount that SGF represents our board, I think it's about 2.8 to 3%, uh, we actually do do a lot of audits on it. Uh, our external auditors randomly select, uh, six schools, we also do internal audits, as well as Ria has been responsible for some audits in the past as well. So for 55 or so schools that we have, the SGF are actually audited quite significantly. Uh, so part of the school audits would include SGF as well as obviously the day, the day's school operation, but SGF is the main part of the, of the audit. Um, that clarifies at least a little bit of it. Um, just to recap, everything is audited, uh, it's included in our audit, it's audited at a higher level than typically, that shouldn't be a higher level, but it's definitely audited at a substantial level, given the relatively small amount of the SGF revenue, relative to our board revenue. Um, but you're correct, uh, we, when we bring in the financial statements, we're going to be showing the dollar amount that we received in revenue, as well as the expenses that we have from school-generated funds, and then anything over and above that will be, uh, in a reserve account that we as a board have no impact over. We cannot, um, use that money for any decisions that we have as a board. It is not included in our, um, budget, or, or, or reserve for compliance purposes.
Trust, uh, trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
No.
Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
So just to summarize, basically, you know, if I'm saying to the other trustees, the reality is, is that, um, it, it has to fall in the accountability of somewhere and we're the ones who have to approve the budget, so by default, we own it. That's, that's just the reality of it. So, so we own it.
Thank you.
Do have a right to ask questions about it, but, but the, yeah, the net impact is zero, there's nothing we can do about it.
Very good, thank you very much trustee Murphy. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'm just looking at the motion again and, and a part of its commissions, and I know somebody mentioned that, you know, school council fundraising, but fundraising is only a portion of it. The commissions refers to pizzas, pizza days, milk, um, anything that the school takes on to help supplement whatever the needs of the school are. At the beginning of the year, the principals set up their, um, what is it called now? Because I'm, I'm, there's been so much talk right now. Um, their school projected, uh, plan, their school improvement plan, which prescribes what needs, that's posted on the website, it's shared with the, uh, school community, the ratepayers, because that's who gets a say in it. It's shared at school council, at school council, they decide what other fundraisers they need to help supplement. They then make a determination with the school community, the teachers, the students, the parents, on what the need is in the school, because only so much is funded to the school. Uh, and then at that point, they make a determination on how to move forward. They are then the ones who decide, along with the principal, how that money is spent. Um, it is, it is made public, it is shared, um, and again, I, I'm still trying to understand by getting this line by line in this detail, um, what we're going, we're trying to accomplish. It's already available, it's already public, it's public to the ratepayers that actually contribute to this portion, not us, it's specific to a school community, um, and it's spent in that school community. Uh, it's audited, it comes in as a line in and a line out, and yes, you know, trustee Murphy said, you know, we are responsible for it, we are responsible for it, and we know that our, our department of financial services, um, has oversight on it, because those school-generated funds, um, are reported on when they, um, I believe all the principals submit their, uh, school improvement plans at the beginning of the school year and they're approved. So they know what their, what their, um, thoughts are and where their, their need is to spend that money. Um, again, I am trying to understand, and I would implore everybody, you know, we have a, a council of chairs meeting tomorrow, and maybe it might be important to have a discussion with all the school parent, and all the parent councils that are going to be there tomorrow, and talk to them, because, you know, we're concerned about where this money is being spent, because that's what this sounds like to me. We keep saying and hiding behind the fact that, oh, we're responsible, well, we are responsible, because we know that it's already reported to, and we know that our stakeholders and our ratepayers, who are the ones that contribute, that they're the ones paying for all this. Let's be really clear, it's their money, not ours. Um, they get to determine where that money is spent through their school community. And if we want to start interjecting in this, maybe, you know what, our parents may come back and say, you know what, I'm not going to, to, to contribute anymore if the board is going to decide how to spend that. That is not the spirit of what school-generated funds is about. Um, that's not what, definitely not what the ministry, uh, talks about, that's not what the ministry describes. Um, and I don't know how many times it needs to be said here, but if we weren't in compliance with something, don't you think it would have been raised by now? Um, so I would ask superintendent Lofts, are we non-compliant? And I think even trustee Duarte even mentioned that we are in compliance, he's done his research as well. But as far as I see, the ministry guidelines on school-generated funds, whether it be, uh, fundraising, commissions, um, athletic fees, that we are in compliance, we meet the requirements, and we reported on such. And unless we plan on getting involved, um, on, like, I'm not, I'm still trying to understand what this gets us. You know, the, the comment that was made in trustee DeRosa's, um, explanation was to make good budget decisions. What budget decisions do we need to make when it comes to school-generated funds? I would like, there's two parts to this, superintendent Lofts, if you could answer foreign compliance, and trustee DeRosa, what budget decisions do we need to make when it comes to school-generated funds? And I'm going based on your explanation.
Um, trustee Guzzo, um, thank you for your observations and comments. Uh, is there a question that you wish to have either superintendent Lofts or director Daley, um, comment on?
So I would like superintendent Lofts to respond that, one, that school-generated funds, uh, that we meet that by what the ministry's description of how we are to utilize school-generated funds, and two, if we're in compliance. Um, has anybody come back to say to us that we're not reporting appropriately, or that we should do what's been suggested here in this motion? And then two, I would like trustee DeRosa to answer the question, because in his, his description or his rationale for his motion, he says he needs this information to make good budgeted decisions. What decisions do we need to make with this information? Because when we do our forecasted budget, we don't have this, this information in front of us and we can't project it, so I want to understand what good budget decisions we make in regard, in regards to school-generated funds.
Superintendent Lofts, can you address that, please?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. To best of my knowledge, right now, we are in compliance, we obviously will review right up to the end of the school year and make the adjustments necessary, but it stands right now, uh, we also haven't looked at every school on our board to make sure everything's on their website, but the ones I did check, there was definitely items, uh, posted, should have posted at this point in time.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up trustee Guzzo?
Well, no, there, there was two parts to my, I asked a, a question of trustee DeRosa as well, which is, how are we making good, he says that we, he needs this information to make good budgeted decisions. What decisions do we need to make?
Okay, all right. All right, thank you trustee Guzzo. So I will yield the floor to trustee DeRosa to address your second part of your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And thank you for the question trustee Guzzo. Um, look, there's some of us around the table, and I will say myself, I've never sat on a, uh, student council or on a parent council. Some of us have, some of us haven't. Uh, at the end of the day, we have a different level of comfort with this. So humbly, I am asking to understand, so that I can make informed decisions. Maybe good budget decisions is not the right word, but informed decisions. So this is a quest for information, right? To understand what this program is, because it is, it is, um, significant in the amount. So I, uh, I, you know, I envy those of you who have been involved with parent councils all your lives, uh, and have gained a certain degree of comfort, and, uh, but that is certainly not my case. But this is not only, this motion is not only about me. This motion is about giving an understanding and asking for information so that we can address an informed, in an informed way, the material amount that is being included in our financial statements. Because to, to trustee Murphy's point, whether we like it or not, uh, this ends up in our lap. Okay? This is not about wanting to control, or wanting to interfere, or suspecting some nefarious things going on, far from. We want to make a good budget, uh, when we approve the budget, we want to be informed of at least the major items, and this is one of them.
I, I'm sorry.
How much simpler I can express it.
I have a, I have a follow-up question, uh, Chair Intamasi. Uh, trustee DeRosa, you made a comment again, to make good decisions. I, I'm not sure how many times it needs to be said this evening, but we don't decide how that money is spent. It does not come to the board, um, when it's generated, and it doesn't come for approval. It is school, and I stress, school-generated funds, it's not board-generated funds. Um, and, uh, so, and they make a decision at the beginning of year what their needs are, because unfortunately, we're not funded, as we know, um, to cover everything. We know that the schools need more than we provide, so they make a decision on what they need and how much they need, and they try to reach that goal. We cannot project it, they cannot project it. Um, so I'm trying to understand what decisions we need to make that you keep referencing. And secondly, if you really are interested in, because you haven't sat on school councils, is that I would implore you to attend tomorrow's, uh, chair of council meetings and talk to the chairs of parent councils, and go to their meetings and find out how that process works, because this is not a new process, this is a process that has been in existence forever, it exists in every single board. And the fact is, is we do not decide how that money is spent. So I am trying to understand why you keep referencing that.
Uh, I will move on to trustee O'Brien, he hasn't had a chance to weigh in on this, uh, and there are several other trustees who have not had a chance to speak. I will now yield the floor to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we have debated this for over an hour, I'd like to know if you could bring it to a vote.
I will, uh, take that under consideration, however, I do have trustee, if you didn't have a question, I will yield the floor to trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I've got a question with respect to the second piece of the motion, um, as it pertains to a list of cash balances. I'm wondering what the intent is there, um, as most trustees would be aware, maybe they're not aware, uh, there's very little cash that is kept on hand at our schools, everything is cash online, and the preference is to use Visa when making any purchases. Um, and I'm not understanding why we, again, you know, if the point behind this is to not be nefarious, and if we're simply looking for some information as it pertains to SGF so we can explain that line item on our budget, uh, which I still don't think we need to be doing, but if we do, then why are we asking for a list of cash balances, including a physical count of hand? Um, I, I'd like to understand why that is in there, because I just don't like the spirit of that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, trustee Agnew. So can we get trustee Carabella to ask her question, and then perhaps I will give it to trustee DeRosa to wrap it up, as, because it's his motion, he gets to go last to wrap up, um, uh, the matter? So I will yield the floor to trustee Carabella.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say that I support this motion. Um, I don't think it's too complex to ask for information and have it rolled up to us. Um, I think we need to see that. Thank you.
Rosa, you get to wrap it up, and then we can take it to a vote. Trustee DeRosa?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Thank you very, everyone for the excellent comments and the vigorous discussion. Um, yesterday I distributed a simplification, a friendly simplification of this, uh, motion, uh, but I feel we've discussed the original motion at this stage of the game.
Jack, uh, trustee DeRosa, you cannot introduce your friendly amendment at this particular time.
All right.
Simply because we've deliberated the original motion, as such, that motion hasn't even been introduced, it haven't been, it hasn't been moved or seconded.
All right, very good. Very good.
So, are you, can you just sum it up?
Lucky rapper.
Or, hang on a minute, before you sum it up, I think trustee O'Hern Zernota wishes to make a comment, so trustee Zernota, can you make a comment after that? Trustee DeRosa, you get to finish. Thank you.
Thank you through, Mr. Chair, and you might have answered my question, because I wanted to amend this, to take a piece of it out. Um, so this is not the time, right? The ruling is that this is not the time?
No, no, it's not, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. So, so is it okay for trustee, uh, DeRosa to, to wrap it up so we can take it to a vote? Yes, okay. So trustee DeRosa, can you please take this, can you please sum it up? And then we will, uh, we have a mo, a mover and a seconder, and then we will vote on it. Thank you.
So I will, I will, um, I distributed a, a purpose for the motion, I will read, uh, what I distributed yesterday as a summary, and I think it encapsulates.
DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, point of order, I'm gonna have to institute a point of order. You cannot, at this particular juncture, introduce a friendly amendment to your original motion. It hasn't been moved, it hasn't been seconded. It hasn't been seconded. The thing that's on the table that, this particular juncture, is your original motion, which was presented to us at June the 2nd. That's the only thing that's on the table.
Mr. Chair, that's what I want to speak to. I want to speak to that.
But you can't. You can only summarize what we've spoken to so far this evening, which is your original motion.
Okay.
All right? So, if you want to summarize the original motion, you're welcome to do so. If you don't have anything to add to it, or you don't wish to make a summary, then we can take it to a vote.
I have nothing to add.
All right. Thank you. So, I will take it to a vote. So, the motion on the table is Trustee De Rosa's motion of June the 2nd. Trustee De Rosa, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte? Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
All right, so, motion passes. So, sorry, my apologies. So, Student, Student Trustee Caratau.
I'd like to say that I'm opposed.
Thank you. Trustee Swan?
Opposed.
Trustee Bambara?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Staff Reports, 9.1, 2020-21 Budget Estimates. Superintendent Lofts, can you please lead us in this particular discussion?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I don't have any updates on the GSN at this point in time. It's been mentioned to us, hopefully, this week. I know I seem to be saying that at every board meeting, but I can only relay the information that I am receiving. So, unfortunately, I don't have any new updates for it.
Thank you, Trustee. Are there any questions from any of the trustees? There are no questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Superintendent Lofts, regarding the budget estimates, in the appendix, A-1, can you see that? A-1, there is a 1.1% increase in occasional teachers this year over last year. Do you see where I'm looking? Superintendent Lofts?
I think that's 10.3?
No. Yeah, 10.3. I'm sorry. Is that where we are?
No, I think we're on 9.1.
I'm sorry. My apologies. I'm sorry.
No problem. We'll get to it, though.
All right. Thank you. So, Trustees Zernota, technically, if you wish to put an amendment to, a friendly amendment to Trustee De Rosa's motion, you can do so.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forth a friendly amendment to that motion on SGF funds. I would like to...
Point of order, sorry, Janet.
That's okay.
Sorry, point of order. The motion's already been voted upon. It's done. Unless it's a motion to reconsider, I don't believe you can do this.
So, you can reconsider during the same meeting. Yes, you can. If you look under reconsideration, we're allowed to do that. So, I'm asking to reconsider this particular motion in light of the fact that Trustee O'Hearn Zernota wishes to make a friendly amendment. We can take it to a vote, and if her friendly amendment fails, then it just stays with the motion that we've approved.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. To reconsider must be done by a person who voted in favor.
In favor. That is correct. And she voted against. You're absolutely correct. Is there anybody on the prevailing side that wishes to put forward a friendly amendment? Or, motion to reconsider, sorry. So, I will list on the prevailing side. Can everybody hear me? So, on the prevailing side, we had Trustee De Rosa, Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Carabella, Trustee Murphy. Any of, any of you wish to add a friendly amendment, or, sorry, reconsider?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Somebody has to come forward with it. You can't coax it.
No, I'm not coaxing it. I'm just asking if there's any of them that wish to have it being reconsidered, to allow Trustee O'Hearn Zernota to add a friendly amendment to the motion.
Mr. Chair, you already asked, and nobody responded.
All right. So, nobody responded. The motion carries the way it was. So, where are we now? All right. So, Agenda Item 10, Information Item, Student Trustee Update. Student Trustee Caratau, can you please start us off?
Of course, Mr. Chair. Seeing as this is the last board meeting, regular board meeting of the year, we all decided to prepare our final statements as student trustees, the three of us, and I can go first. So, I speak to you today to make my final statement on my time here on this board. I'm proud to have served as a representative to each and every one of the students of North Halton and of the HCSB in general. I'm very thankful to the trustees, the superintendents of this board, the senior staff, Rosie and Director Daly, for the guidance they've given me and everything they've taught me in my term. I'm especially thankful to my peers as well, the teachers, administration, the parish, my hometown of Milton, for bringing me to this position. I've always thought that the office of student trustee is more than just token student representation. It's more than a resume pad for overachievers. It's a genuine opportunity to do right by the students of this board, to fight for their needs and to usher in meaningful change. I'm glad that myself and my colleagues have embodied this ideal, and I trust that our successes will follow it as well. Change isn't always welcome, and it's never easy, but as a student, a graduating student, I know the value of improving and growing, I'd like to say. To that extent, I believe the incoming student trustees will quickly learn to do an excellent job, and I encourage the board to continue with its introspection in improving our processes and helping better the lives of students. Because why else really are we here? It may be self-centered of me, or just by virtue of my position as a student trustee, but I always consider students to be the group of greatest concern in our education system. I hope you all agree. I really just leave all of you my thanks tonight, and I entrust you and the incomings with my most raw and genuine mission, to listen to the students of this board, listen and act. It's for that purpose for which we are serving, and I pray that trustees will sit at this table in protection of Catholic education and our students forevermore. So, I've been Davin Caratau, and it's been my absolute pleasure to serve as North Halton Student Trustee and the Halton Catholic District School Board for the 2019-2020 school
Thank you, Trustee Caratau. Very well said. Who's next?
That would be me, Mr. Chair. Hi.
Go ahead.
So, first, I would just like to start it off with basically just a report, so updating on what students are doing right now. So, with the school year wrapping up, students are beginning their end-of-year celebrations, virtually, of course. So, for secondary students, this includes Athletic and Art Council awards being given and graduation ceremonies. For elementary students, this includes finishing their faith-based curriculums and graduations for their eighth-grade students. At this time, teachers are reaching out to students who are returning this week to pick up remaining items in their locker and or anything they've left, as well as reaching out to graduating students about coming back to receive long signs or any, basically just tokens to take with them. Now, to speak as a student trustee, I'm honored to have had the opportunity to serve as a student trustee and work alongside such dedicated advocates for Catholic education, as well as so many important social issues such as mental health and bullying. I truly hope the lessons I've learned here follow me into my future endeavors. As a graduating student, I have learnt how this board oversees the success of every student and redefine success as specific to each individual. Student advocacy has always been a passion of mine, and I cannot wait to see what incoming student trustees do while Dilux Davin and I lead this position. I'm honestly grateful for everything that I've learnt on this position, and Dilux now.
Thank you very much, Trustee Bambara. Trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to provide a quick update, that actually, one of our student trustees has been elected to be Aseco's Public Affairs Coordinator for the next year, so she will be studying her term on August 1st. I'll leave this meeting probably with even more tears than when I had my first board meeting, and it's such an honor to serve under this role as a representative for Burlington students in the Halton Catholic District School Board. I think this year shows a lot of the resilience that students have, and even amid all the disruptions, I can even look back on this year with such pride and such faith, knowing that hopefully I will have made even a small difference in the lives of our students, committing free menstrual products in all of our schools, voicing what students had about, or were currently thinking about e-learning, even getting that survey about what students thought about Burlington Transit. And even now, student voices will continue to thrive in our board, and really, in a time of, right now, in a time of distress and disorder, a time of confusion even, more than ever, we will need to listen to all of our students. The issues that we currently see today in the world will need the consultation of our students, and I have great confidence that our incoming student trustees will uphold this mandate to the fullest. And so, I just want to say a huge thank you to all of the trustees for the support of not only me, but Trustee Caratau and Trustee Bambara. My appreciation for board comes from their dedication to giving our students the best opportunity they can to be successful when they leave our board, and really, their dedication to protecting one of the greatest systems in Ontario, protecting Catholic education. And I also want to thank our directing secretary of the board, Pat Daly, and the work of senior staff. They have not only guided me and my colleagues through our term as a student trustee, but in a time where of uncertainty, they've been working arduously in ensuring the success of our students. And of course, I also want to thank Rosie Di Pietro, the Executive Secretary, for always keeping us on track, requesting our highly sought-after student trustee reports, and managing everything that administration-related. I want to thank all of you for making this term such a wonderful experience, and while I might leave this board, I know that my legacy will always remain. Thank you.
Much. So, hold that thought. Before I yield the floor to Vice Chair Duarte, I need a motion to extend.
I can move it.
Moved by Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee O'Brien. I will take it to a vote. Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Student Trustee Caratau?
In favor.
Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Student Trustee Bambara?
In favor.
Motion carries. I will now yield the floor to Vice Chair Duarte. I believe he has a few comments to make pertaining to our three outgoing trustees.
Trustees Caratau, Swan, and Bambara, I can't see you, but you are there. As student trustees elected to represent the student body at HCSB, you three have shown remarkable maturity, insights, and work ethics, and you are a testament to the extra value Catholic education adds to the growth of the whole person in our system. The dedication of all three of you have shown throughout the year and in your student life will no doubt take you to new heights as you move forward in your life journey. You will increasingly become aware why Catholic education matters, and for us, trustees, you are the reason why we are all involved in the first place. Thank you for your insightful reports. You bless us with every board meeting. It has been a pleasure working with you over the past years, and I wish you all success in all your future endeavors. As the Irish would say, and Trustee Murphy would attest to that, may the wind always be at your back. Thank you, and God bless you in everything that you do.
All right. Thank you very much, Trustee Duarte. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 10.11, Food Waste Management Practices. Student Trustee Swan, I believe you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess I'll try my best to summarize as much as I know about this. This has been an issue that our students have been raising for quite a while now. Unfortunately, a lot of disruptions this year has impeded that, but I'm happy to present this to you today for this to be on the record. Last year, and I believe it was late last year, we had students raise concerns of food waste happening at Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School occurring in the servery. What they had told me was that their considerable quantity of food that was not sold at the end of the lunchtime period was thrown away, and so, when we asked them what kind of food was being thrown, it involved very much cooked products as well as drinks, such as quote-unquote "jet juice." This is a beverage that's sold in our serveries regularly. And so, earlier this year, when we had kind of gone into contact with the staff at the servy, and we asked them about what their current practices of food waste is, sorry, when we asked them about their current practices of food waste, they had responded saying that, well, we're mandated to throw any of this surplus of food that was not sold during the two lunch periods, and of course, because it's not their food to deal with in the first place, they are not allowed to take any leftover food with them. When I reached out to my principal in December of this year, or 2019, rather, she recommended me to forward this issue to Andrea Swindon, with the understanding that Corpus Christi's servy staff is employed with Chartwell's, which is the education group of Compass Canada. The request was then forwarded to Daniel Takalsik, who is, I believe, the manager of purchasing services at the board, to investigate the RFP with Chartwell's, as well as reach out to the vendor, and so, that RFP on the HCSB side was provided to me. And in following up with Chartwell's, they noted the following in their response. Their response is on the document, but essentially that any leftover food not consumed from a buffet table or a catered event, or food that's been left at the serving line must not be donated for really health and safety regulations, but that staff were encouraged to donate what they call unserved food at the unit through a program, Food Rescue dot C, with second harvest, where these donations are traceable. So, the concerns I'm having here is really, I think it covers a wide range, but really about transparency, right? How much food are they wasting on a regular basis? Do we even have these, does the board even have access to these logs in the secondary schools that currently operate these serveries? And now that they mention kind of food, encouraging food donations from these units, which organizations are currently receiving these unserved food from Chartwell's, who is operating in our serveries? And of course, what kind of goals are we setting on the vendors to really mitigate the food waste? And for me, I'm very novice on this issue, so I would really love if staff could weigh in on this. So, just to give me a better understanding, because it is quite startling when we know that, for instance, Canadians waste up to $31 billion in food every single year and across all stages of the food chain. In 2015, we know that Ontarians generated over 300, about 3.7 million tons of food and organic waste. This includes food that could have been eaten, repurposed, unavoidable waste, obviously, and about 60% of this was being sent to landfills as well. And we know that even about 20% of Canada's methane emissions, opponent greenhouse gas, comes from landfills. And I think it would be notable to point out that even in the government's policies, where I believe it's PPM number 150, the school food and beverage policy on October 4th, 2010, asked the boards to really consider being environmentally aware, which is reducing food waste, reusing containers, recycling food scraps. And so, really, it's just, I'm just really wanting to know more about this, because I think that, I think by raising this issue into public, we have a better sense of how we're able to manage our food waste. This is really an issue, not just in an environmental perspective, but it is also an issue that concerns the entire community, because we have organizations who are willing to accept food, to divert them to whichever families need the food the most. And I think that purely from that standpoint, I think that... I think that this is an issue that's worth talking about and at least starting the discussion, even though it's June 16th and we are leaving our terms. So I guess that concludes the end of my presentation. I guess I'll, I guess I'll leave it up to questions, I guess?
I'll open it to questions. First on cue is trustee Keratau. Trustee Keratau, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't have a question. I'm just here to make a statement on what I believe to be an excellent report from my friend and colleague trustee Swan. Students complain a lot about cafeteria food, but they would be much angrier if they knew what we've just read in this report. I'm glad that Mr. Swan's may notice such a significant problem he frequently and with distinction brings light to issues such as this. Issues of great importance to the board and to its students. It said that man cannot live on bread alone, but we have in this country those who lack even that very bread. Our board should not endorse the wasting of food in our schools when people in our community suffer from food insecurity. To that end, I think we ought to hold vendors that operate within our schools accountable for their practices. And I encourage the board to develop a well-reasoned and tangible solution to this issue. Thank you.
Ta, you keep raising the bar. Are there any other questions? Trustee Agnew, I believe you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would actually like to put a motion on the floor, given that it's germane to the conversation.
State your motion.
All right. Be it resolved that a staff report be completed and brought to the December 1st, 2020 regular board meeting with regards to the board's strategy in combating food waste in secondary school serveries, including details on waste audits and other pertinent information. Be it further resolved, additional details be provided in the report around investigating the possibility of participation in food donation programs and if the board is currently involved with same. And I can send that to Rosie.
And I second that.
So can I have a second there? Trustee Guzzo, thank you. Thank you for your second. Is there any questions to trustee Agnew's motion? Trustee Swan, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to, I think, I don't think it's really actually a question. I think it's more of a comment. Yeah, so I think that it's really important that, I think this is probably of an interest to our board, especially because this is an issue, this is an issue of the environment. It's, we ingrain that in our policies with, I'm not sure what policy number it is, but it's under the policy for environmental stewardship. I feel that the, I think that food waste is really a heavy abuse of our natural resources and that we'd be making sure to protect it. But it's also an issue that concerns really our community. And I think having this in the public light, I think it will give rise to more information about how can we better maintain sustainability in our schools, especially with our vendors.
Thank you very much trustee, trustee Carabella. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the report and the idea and just keeping track of that, keeping your eyes on the ball and you know, food waste is really a shame. I was wondering if the staff had anything, any comments on your report?
So trustee Carabella, Director Daly does have a comment to make, so trustee, or Director Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I guess my comment is to thank trustee Swan for the work that he's done on this report. I really can't comment in terms of what measures we have in place right now, but certainly if the motion on the floor passes, we'll be able to bring that information back to board in, I think I heard, December.
Trustee Agnew, can you verify that, please?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you. All right. So do you wish to continue, Secretary Daly? No? All right. So trustee O'Hearn Zernota, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Secretary Daly answered my question. I was just wondering if there was a report, no one's since been reinventing the wheel, so I'll pass.
Thank you. Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Superintendent Merrick? Yeah, I'm here. Thanks. And through the chair, I heard someone mention that doing some waste audit work and I can say that we do do waste audits at all of our schools every year. The ministry requires us to do it at representative schools, so I know a lot of other boards do waste audits at schools of particular size and then use that to extrapolate across all the other schools of a similar size. But we do it at all of our schools every year. I believe it's on our public-facing website as well. I can't find the link right now, but I will find that and send it to trustees.
Much. Thanks for sharing that. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank trustee Swan for bringing this up. I'm very impressed. It only shares, it shows a concern for the poor, but it shows a concern for the environment and I will definitely be supporting this motion.
Brian, trustee Carabella, did you have a supplementary that I forgot to give you?
Thank you. No, I just thought of another, what I wanted to propose, that a great way to take care of food management is to make your own lunch. And I would make that sort of an advice. It can make your lunch day, make your lunch week, make your lunch month. And then I also do have a question for staff. It's like for the money generated at the cafeteria, is it significant? Is it, it's a service, of course, to provide food for the students, but it is also a place that funds are generated? Thank you.
Thank you. Who wishes to address that? Superintendent Merrick, do you want to address that or? All right. So trustee Carabella, Superintendent Laft has said that he's going to look it up and get back to us on that. Is that okay?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
So Superintendent Merrick, you do have a comment that you wish to make? Go ahead.
If trustees are interested in our waste audit data, you can go to our hcdsb.org website, go to schools and then under under the Energy Conservation and Environmental Stewardship page, there's the whole section in there with Waste Management and Waste Audits back to 2009, 2010 school year. So lots of data there that are just about waste collection in our schools. It is not particular to cafeteria waste, it's for the entire school. And I would, I would state that we do see different trends at different schools. So certain schools have a very big awareness program at the schools and we see fantastic, you know, waste diversion trends come out of those schools. Other ones are still working on improving their waste diversion skills, but there's a wealth of data there for trustees and student trustees to look at if they wish.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm involved with this industry. We create controlled environments, refrigerated space, mostly for food and pharmaceutical industry. So as trustee Swan has alluded to, basically, North America throws out 40% of the food that is grown and produced. Enough food that actually could eliminate world hunger, just in the food that we throw away. There's two big challenges, though. It's distribution, right? It's how do you get food that is perishable to where it's needed? So that's a big challenge. One of the elements that we would have to look at is the menu. So as soon as you have HMRs, which is hot meal replacements, the waste factor for HMRs is about 75%. So most of our current chains of supermarkets, if you notice, they're getting out of that business because it loses so much money. So really, to add to this element, we really would need to look at the menu and the ideal situation then is is to have food that doesn't have to be heated or to be heated rapidly, but then you impact some of the health. So there's a lot of regulations in the municipal health department. It's, they're very stringent and there's a lot of regulations federally through the Canadian Food Inspection Agency. It's a great idea. It's a great initiative to look at. It's a very, very complex, complex big issue. If we can help solve it, then you can, literally, you could eliminate hunger in your community.
Thank you very much trustee Murphy. Is there any other questions? Otherwise, I will yield the floor to trustee Agnew to wrap up, since it is her motion to speak to it. Trustee Agnew?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Two quick things to wrap up. So one, thank you Superintendent Merrick for that information. I guess I'll go back to our earlier conversations that we know that the SGF's information is actually contained on each of the board, each of the school websites. However, it would seem to trustees that that would be easier to understand should that all be rolled up and so maybe it's the same with this. So recognizing that that information is available there, it's probably easier to see it in a report. And as you mentioned, it doesn't specifically just speak to food waste. So I think it would be some value in having a report much to the motion on the floor. And also, just to trustee Murphy's point, I worked in managed services for about 10 years and so I'm very familiar with, you know, food waste audits and menu generation and food costs. So I agree, a lot of it has to do with the food that's being purchased, the menu that's being developed. So, you know, I don't disagree that, you know, the bigger problem is probably more than we can solve, but I think if we can get a clearer idea of what the waste is looking like and if we have the audits available, that shouldn't be too much information to pull together and then take a look at what we're currently doing to reduce waste and look at any potential community partnerships that we could be a part of to perhaps address some of those issues with hungry, the hungry people in our community.
Thank you trustee Agnew. Since you put the motion forward, could you read the motion to us one more time before we take it to a vote?
Yep, just give me a second. So be it resolved that a staff report be completed and brought to the December 1st, 2020 regular board meeting with regards to the board's strategy in combating food waste in secondary school serveries, including details on waste audits and other pertinent information. Be it further resolved, additional details be provided in the report around investigating the possibility of participation in food donation programs and if the board is currently involved with same.
Thank you. So that motion was moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Guzzo. I will take it to a vote. Trustee De Rosa?
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Durt?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi in favor. Student trustee Keratau?
In favor.
Student trustee Swan?
In favor.
Student trustee Bambara?
In favor.
Motion carries. Oh, trustee Murphy, my apologies. Trustee Murphy.
I don't take it personal, Chair.
You know what I do? I cross out before somebody replies and then I get messed up. My apologies. Go ahead.
In favor.
Thank you. Motion carries by unanimous, unanimously. Agenda Item 10.2, Construction Report, Assumption Catholic Secondary School, Bishop Reading Catholic Secondary School, St. Michael Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick, can you please lead us or provide us your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the construction reports for June. First up, we have Assumption Catholic Secondary School. You can see it there nearing completion. The classrooms in the top left there are nearly complete. The library, the ceilings are in, lights are in. You can see the millwork going in there as well. So again, nearing completion there. The back patio in the bottom-left picture there, that's nearing completion. All the hardscaping's in now. We have some big trees that are coming into those, the, I guess, the soil islands that you see there, so those still have to come in, but nearing completion on the back patio as well. And then at the front, this is, these pictures were from about two weeks ago. But a lot of the work's been having at the front now. We have curbs and asphalt going in to finalize the parking lot at the front and the side of the school as well. So those are ongoing now, hoping to wrap up in the next couple of weeks as we have finishing trades all throughout the new section of the building as well right now. So looking good on this one to have it ready in early summer and then ready for students to start in September. On the next page, if you want to slide down there, we have the Bishop Reading.
Trustee Merrick, I'm going to hold you to that on the assumption comment that you just made, that it will be ready for September.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Next up is the Bishop Reading School and Childcare Centre Edition. So in the top-left picture here is actually the Childcare Centre. You can see the, most of the masonry is done there. The open web still joints are going on. I think roof deck's going on right now as well. So we're into roof deck and membrane to make the Childcare Centre water tight. The bottom two pictures are the classroom addition. As you can see, the painting's done in the classroom addition. Ceramics in the hallways are done. And we're proceeding on with the rest of the finishing trades, so millwork and flooring in the classrooms as well as lockers for the hallways going in there. And then the bottom-left picture there is actually the courtyard. So we built a C-shaped addition, which holds the majority of the classrooms in the new addition piece, but it's C-shaped to allow light into the existing classrooms that we have on that northwest side of the building. And the courtyard there you see is with the stones there, so it's kind of an outdoor learning space as well for the students. And then the top-right picture, if you want to slide back up there, is the cafeteria addition. So we're working on that as well. We have, the roofing deck is on now. They're prepping the facade for windows. So we have roofing membrane to go on and floor slab to happen in the next couple of weeks and continue on building up the new cafeteria, the much, much larger cafeteria addition for Bishop Reading. I could also say, I don't want to be pictures of it here, but we are also starting the interior renovation, so there's a lot of interior work that goes on in support of this massive addition. So the office demolition, the office has been reconfigured now to move the office closer to the new front of the school, the new front entrance of the school. The office demolition happened starting last, end of last week and will continue on through this week. And we're also converting all of the old science labs into new science labs because the new classroom addition houses all seven new science labs. So that's it for Bishop Reading. And then we'll slide down a page to the St. Michael's School and Childcare Edition. Again, this is a, we're adding a library and a childcare centre to the school. Stuff in the photos there, that's on the library and childcare centre edition, so you can see the slabs already in. They're working on load-bearing walls now. Again, this is from, this is from last week, so we're almost on the load-bearing walls now. And then we'll start to see steel show up shortly as well as the interior partition walls as well. And then we're also starting on the interior renovations to go along with this one as well, so the new library, or the old library has already been emptied out and is underway, the conversion to a, to the new office for the school. And then when we get into the summer, the new office will be converted over to the classroom addition for the school. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have on these three projects.
So there is a question from trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. To Superintendent Merrick, it seems strange to me that the assumption project, because it's taking longer than expected, is costing us more. There seems to be something wrong with this statement. It shouldn't be the other way around. It's taking longer, so it should cost us less. What do you think?
Superintendent Merrick, go ahead.
That's all right. I don't think I said that, but I mean, it is true that projects take longer. They do cost more because you're paying for that labor to be on the site. You're paying for rentals to be on the site, equipment to be on the site. Absolutely, that is true. I didn't say that, but that typically is true, yes.
So, but it is costing us more, right?
The project, there have been additional costs to this project. We do have contingencies built into projects to account for those things, though. Correct.
Would you ever consider late fees?
Uh, late fees for, uh, contractor completing a project?
Yes.
Uh, I think we've had this conversation before, but, uh, late fees typically, if you build them into the contract of a project, um, whether it's on time or whether it's late, you're going to pay those late fees regardless. So if, if you build them into a contract for a project, um, they're going to charge you for those late fees upfront. So it'll increase the cost of your projects. Um, we already have a lot of challenges right now fitting our projects in, um, with the funding that we get from the ministry. Um, so I'd be very hesitant to do that, knowing that, uh, we likely couldn't afford any of the projects, or at least not in the form that we've built, uh, to, over the past number of years. Um, the, the other thing that would cause is you may get, uh, bidders that we worked, or GCs that we worked with on it for a number of years, that will refuse to bid the projects then. So then you reduce your pool of people bidding on the project, uh, which will then lead to higher prices and less competition on the project. So, um, I, I, I don't know anyone in the province, uh, in the school field that's doing that. Um, not to say that we couldn't, but, uh, I'd be very hesitant and, and think a long time before I, I, I went that, that path.
Just a comment, i- it seems like the contractors, um, have the upper hand always in these, uh, decisions. Just a comment.
Trustee O'Brien, my apologies, but that's your third comment, um, so it's your last one. Superintendent Merrick?
Sorry, I don't, I don't think there was a question there, but, uh, yeah, I, I have no comment on that.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Kara Tao, student trustee Kara Tao?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mister Chair, we need a, a motion to extend.
Uh, it's still 29, so yes, uh, we can take a motion to extend. I have 10:29 here. What do you have?
I've got 10:30.
So there you go. Why, it's 10:29? Oh, no, it's 10:30. Okay, I need a motion to extend. Can I have a, a mover? Nobody is moving?
I move.
Moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by?
Kara Tao.
Seconded by trustee O'Hearn Zernota. I will now take a vote. Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn? Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi in favor. Trustee Kara Tao?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambara?
In favor.
Motion carries. Okay, go ahead. Uh, trustee Kara Tao, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, to superintendent Merrick, um, it looks like progress is going along splendidly in our school's addition projects, specifically BR. Uh, I don't know if you recall, but from the first board meeting I attended, I kind of gave you a hard time about the timeline of those renovations to my school, Bishop Reading. Uh, however, I, I'd like to thank you for all the work you've done in planning out that process. And I'd like to ask again, a little more kindly, um, how soon do you think it would be finished? Specifically each section, the classrooms, childcare center, cafeteria and such on, uh, and when they'd be available for general use?
Uh, superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Thanks. And, and through the chair, um, i- i- it has been a challenging project, especially at BR where we're building on three corners of the building right now. Um, and, you know, throw in the, uh, the COVID pandemic, uh, throwing a few, uh, curveballs at us as well. Um, the, uh, classroom addition, uh, we're well on pace to have that ready, uh, in, in entirety, uh, for September. The cafeteria one, um, we were on track to have that ready for September. Um, with COVID, we may be closer to end of September, early October. What we're trying to do there, uh, is at least have the, uh, kind of the, the eating space there. Uh, even if, if the kitchen isn't ready, um, for September, uh, September 1st or, uh, the day after Labor Day, uh, at least have the eating area ready for that, uh, that space. So that's our objective for the summer. Um, the, the cafeteria kitchens do have a, a lot of, uh, equipment and technology in it. So they are challenged to, to get ready and inspected and, and have them up and running. Um, so that may be later, uh, into September and October. Uh, and then the childcare center, again, we were trying to have that done, uh, for, uh, uh, Labor Day weekend as well. We actually intended to move that in August. Um, it may be closer now to a September move. Uh, and then the challenge with that is we, we have a, a functioning childcare center at the school right now that has to move into this new space. Um, so when they actually get in there to, to operate that space, um, we'll be a little bit up to the operator that we have there now, the family place, uh, and working with them to find a, a suitable weekend to move. But, um, the, for the most part, the, the biggest piece that we needed to have ready for September is the classroom addition, which houses 27 of the 29 classrooms that we're adding, uh, to the school. Uh, and that's the, the piece that we're, we're right on track to have ready for, uh, for Labor Day weekend. So, uh, we're happy with that and, uh, it allows us to remove, uh, a number of portables from the site, uh, and kind of free up a lot of, uh, space and congestion, uh, and, and, and make it better for, for staff and students, uh, on the site.
Thank you very much, uh, superintendent Merrick. Is there any other questions? If there are no other questions, I will move on to agenda item 10.3, budget report for September 1st, 2019 to May 31st, 2020. Superintendent Loffs, can you please provide us the background to this?
Uh, sir, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first I'd actually like to thank the finance department preparation of this report. Not only did the team have to prepare it in a short turnaround time, this is dated from May 31st, uh, we also had to combine the two financial systems, uh, to prepare this report. So thank you to my team. Uh, please find a task, a quarter report to be entered by May 2020. The report reflects COVID-19 as approximately two and a half of the months in this quarter were directly impacted by this pandemic. As a summary, the board is on pace to base, to meet all those obligations for 2019, 2020 school year. Senior manager Adam Cross will lie available to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, superintendent Loffs. Uh, trustee O'Brien, you have a question?
I do. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to superintendent Loffs. Uh, question about appendix, um, A1. Um, expenses, I'm, it does say that our occasional teacher costs are up 1.1%. That's $37,000 more than last year. Yet, um, we've been in lockdown since March 11th. Um, how do you account for that?
How do I count for it? I don't know if that's a, uh, a fair question, how do I count for it? But what I can say is that we actually, if you look at it as a percentage of the amount spent in our budget, we're actually significantly lower than we were last year at this time. So we've spent 64% of our allocated budget for this year, whereas last year this time, we were about 80%. Um, if you look at the 18, 19 financial statements, actually we had as of last year, $4.3 million. Um, so at the end of last year, we spent $4.3 million. So as a percentage, uh, trustee O'Brien, we're actually, um, in a better position than we were last year at this time when you look at our budget. And don't forget too, that we actually have more staff than we would have had last year as well.
Um, is there a follow-up, trustee O'Brien?
Um, no, thank you.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions? Uh, trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is for superintendent Loffs. Uh, are school generated funds listed somewhere on this?
Um, yes, they are. Oh, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. They are, trustee Guzzo, they are listed, uh, almost towards the bottom, it says $13 million, and then the expenses are $6.8 million or so. Uh, I don't know if you see that, it's probably about a third of the way up from the bottom.
I see it. Thank you very much. And, and this is obviously in compliance with the requirements here of the budget.
That's right, yes.
Uh, do you have a follow-up, trustee Guzzo?
Nope, nope, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing there are no other questions, I will move on to agenda item 10.4, Capital Projects Reports as of May 31st, 2020. Superintendent Loffs, you get the honors again. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, please find the task everyone, the capital report relating to the outstanding capital of projects. Uh, senior manager Adam Cross will lie available to answer any questions they have related to the account.
So are there any questions, trustees? No questions? Then I will move on to, uh, agenda item 10.5, Halton Student Transportation Services, HSDS Annual Report. Superintendent Loffs, you have the honor again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, please find the HSDS Annual Report for your review. Uh, the number of students transported has been increasing over the last few years for our board. Uh, last year was 12,156 that we transported over the prior few years. This represents about 34% of our students. So we transport roughly 34% of our students, uh, on a yearly basis. Uh, any questions?
Um, are there any questions, trustees? I do have a question. Um, 34% is how many students?
Uh, it's about 12,156.
Well, that's pretty accurate there. 456, that's very, very good. Uh, and how do we compare to, uh, our co-terminals board?
I looked at that too, trust, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. I looked at that as well. I think based on, I, from a memory, I think we had about 64,000 students. So that was about 30%.
Yeah, they're lower because they live closer, because they have more schools. Thank you very much. Um, 10.6 Extended School Closures and September Reopening. Secretary Daly, I believe you are going to have to address this one.
Thank you. And, uh, I'll just, uh, something else on the screen here.
All right, excuse, um, excuse us for the technical difficulties, um. Secretary Daly, go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so at least for the, the school year, I guess our final update with regards to, um, extended school closure. So trustees would recall, uh, that our schools have been closed since, um, March break, since March 12th. And towards the middle of May, uh, we found out they were going to be closed for the remainder of the school year. Uh, so tonight, I'd like to give you an update on the remainder of this school year. Our summer learning program, in case we have, uh, a fair amount more detail, uh, as opposed to we did at the last board meeting. And then some of our plans around planning for re-entry in September of 2020. As always, um, the principles that we've been trying to follow over the past couple of months is to maintain the health well-being of our students, staff and families, to provide continuity of learning, and to provide support for our teachers and support staff to help them, uh, support our students. Uh, we are rapidly coming to an end of phase two. Uh, so phase two began on April 6th when teacher-led distance learning, uh, was put in place, and it will complete at the end of this school year. And as we're finishing up phase two, we're also planning for phase three. Um, and in this particular phase, again, our goals were a successful completion of school year, uh, for students to advance to the next grade, for our secondary school students to earn credits, and ultimately for our grade eights and our grade 12s to graduate. In terms of our supports for schools, and I, I've kind of, um, uh, really summarized it, uh, for this particular report, our consultants and itineraries continue to respond to teacher requests regarding online learning. There's a couple of, uh, I, I just saw an email blow out today, there's a few, um, insurances coming up next week. But more in prep really for next year than, uh, the rest of this school year. Um, our curriculum staffs worked hard to provide support around synchronous learning, which I think, uh, since, um, synchronous learning, uh, was mandated, uh, our teachers have done a great job on, uh, trying to gain greater confidence in synchronous learning. Um, and we've seen that across our schools in the system. Um, this one's a bit of a note, but just to, to know that, uh, our curriculum department is still kind of doing its regular work as well. So the work it would be doing if we were still back in school. And we're excited that, uh, this week we do have a live virtual event celebrating National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, we're really kind of leading the charge on this one, uh, with six other Catholic school boards and two public school boards in Ontario. So, uh, we're excited about that event this Friday afternoon. In terms of our special education department and, and our, our spec ed staff have done, all of our staff, but our spec ed staff's done some tremendous work over the last couple of months. So this is a really kind of truncated version of, of what they continue to do, but they do continue to support our students, uh, whether it's with our certs, our EAs, social workers, child and youth counselors, speech and language, psychologists, et cetera. So the work, the fine work they've been doing continues. Uh, and also they're working on transitioning for next year for our students, as well as, uh, providing our new summer learning program. Our school admin, we continue to meet with them, uh, weekly. We continue to meet, actually, we're, we're only meeting once a week now with senior admin because our second meeting of the week has now been taken up by, uh, meeting, uh, to devise plans for next year. So they're meeting in smaller groups. A couple of things that are coming up over the next week and a half. Our grade 12 and grade 8 graduations will be happening virtually. Uh, our high schools, the secondary school students have been, uh, granted access to buildings this week. Uh, so they've been in Monday and Tuesday to both drop off materials and to clean out their lockers. And by all accounts, that process has gone well. Over Monday and Tuesday, we continue to prepare for our summer learning programs and for the September 2020 startup. Um, trustees may, uh, be interested in that, uh, our elementary and secondary report cards, uh, will be distributed electronically this year. We've never done that before. Um, and they'll go out to parents and guardians next week. Uh, parents and guardians will require their child's OEM to access the report card, and provisions will also be put in place, uh, for families who may not be able to receive report cards electronically. So we'll deliver, either deliver them or deliver them by mail. In terms of our access to school plans, which I mentioned, uh, we've done this all along with, uh, in consultation with Calton Regional Public Health, uh, superintendent Ball and superintendent Merrick, as well as Kim George from our, um, uh, HR staff, have been, uh, instrumental in putting these protocols together, also working with the co-terminals board. As I said, secondary students are in this week. Elementary schools will provide access to parents next week. Uh, our elementary teachers, probably in most schools, would have been in at some point this week to help clean up student desks, to pack up their things, uh, so ster- uh, parents can do, um, a relatively quick curbside pickup starting next week. Uh, each of our schools will hold a gra- a virtual grad ceremony for their graduating students. Um, our strategic communications, uh, staff has worked really hard to put together a template, uh, that schools could use. And, and that's ongoing now as we're uploading, um, video and, and making sure all our schools are ready to go. Um, it's been great that so many trustees have been able to provide messages for our various schools. The schools do appreciate it, certainly parents will appreciate it as well. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Um, summer learning, so, uh, not too much of an update on the secondary school side. I think I shared this with you at our last report. Um, but our, our, our regular secondary school credits will be offered in an e-learning or virtual format. Um, there will be full credit, upgrade courses, credit recovery options, as well as new reach-ahead credit opportunities. For, so for students who are graduating out of grade eight, they are... they are allowed to take a grade nine summer school credit if they wish to. That's new for us, so we're excited about that. And it'll be interesting to get a sense this year of how that program rolls out. We mentioned that on May twenty-ninth, the ministry did provide some additional details around funding for special education summer school programs. And so May twenty-ninth, today's June sixteenth, that was a pretty quick turnaround time in terms of deciding which ways we could best support as many secondary, or sorry, as many special education students as we could. So it's kind of all hands on deck this summer. We're really excited that our social work and CYCs will still be able to continue to provide support they've been providing for students throughout the school year. They'll be able to extend that into the summer. We think that's going to be really important for the transition process of our students back in September. But they'll also be able to add students to their caseloads if necessary. Our special education resource teachers will be providing support in our secondary school program and our elementary literacy program, as well as doing some instruction in a couple of our special programs. Educational assistance will support in elementary literacy and numeracy programs, as well as our special programs. Speech and language pathologists will also be able to support our students in our new programs, as well as some of our other special education staff. Our new special programs, which we are really excited about, and going to be very interested to see how they run, are going to be run into two-week blocks. One kind of midsummer, and then one to help transition at the end of the summer. There'll be synchronous online sessions, so there'll be a two-hour session per day. And we've tried to devise enough programs that we can meet the needs of many different types of students. So we'll have one elementary community living program, and kind of the descriptors of students who might fit into those programs are on the slides. Two elementary structured teaching programs. Two elementary essential skills programs, two secondary life skill programs. And we've been fortunate that we've got that additional funding this year to be able to provide these programs. All of those courses will be taught by our CERTs, and they also may include as-needed support from speech and language, from EAs, behavior analysts, deaf and hard-of-hearing staff, blind, low-vision as well. So that's really exciting for us. I think it's going to be a very successful program. I think it'll be something that trustees will need to turn their minds to in next year's budget cycle, because I don't anticipate that funding remaining from the province, although it could. But certainly, if these are successful, as successful as we hope they will be, and as great a support to students and families as we hope they will be, I think it's something that we should and hopefully will consider going forward. In terms of kind of our next steps, and that's, whoops, that's planning for our reopening in September of 2020. Our goals again in this phase, we want to make sure that when we come back to school, we do it in a way that ensures everyone's healthy and safe, staff, students, family. We'll need to do some work when we do come back, addressing some of those learning gaps that may have developed over the last couple of months, and then again over the summer months. That being said, we have a tremendous number of students who have registered or are trying to register for our summer school programs across the board, from our elementary programs to secondary. It's going to be massive, so hopefully that will help mitigate some of that, kind of that summer learning loss that we sometimes are concerned about. And we'll also continue to focus on mental health supports as students come back. It is one of the domains that we're looking at in our planning. We just received from school mental health, literally today, kind of an early reflection tool that we can use to help plan our next steps. We've been doing that planning in our SpecEd department anyway, but it looks like it's a, it'll be a really good tool called supporting a mentally healthy return to school. Literally just got it this afternoon. So when we come back in September, we're really planning for three scenarios, because we're not sure what we're going to come back to. And we talked about these the last couple of weeks. So one would be kind of conventional delivery. We would come back to school as we normally would in September. Obviously, we'd have to consider additional cleaning protocols, how students get in and out of the building, how they move around the building, social distancing, how we would schedule that. So that's kind of one option that we're planning for. At the other end of the spectrum is really coming back to where we are now, where we would be completely online and still providing virtual delivery. I think it's probably more likely we'll land somewhere in between. And that's, I mean, I think that's where we'll be. The language that the ministry is using is adaptive delivery, so a bit of a combination of both. So students would physically be back in the building. We'd need a number of protocols again to ensure social distancing, to make sure students and staff can move around the building safely. In that particular delivery model, if we are looking at a limit of, say, fifteen to twenty students in a class, that probably would or would necessitate a bit of an A-B schedule. It'd be unlikely we'd be able to have all the students in the building at any given time. So we are looking at some scheduling scenarios around students being in school, maybe one day and then at home the other day, in kind of a virtual environment. Another model we're looking at is where students would be in school Monday, Tuesday, and then another group of students would be in Thursday, Friday. And Wednesday could be kind of that deep cleaning day opportunity for teachers to work on some online learning, for them to get their contractual prep time. So we're really trying to plan for all of those scenarios. What the government has, so the, kind of the key considerations that we're looking at, we touched on these last week, are these five. So, and I won't go into tremendous detail on all of them. The titles kind of indicate what our teams are looking at. But in terms of logistics and planning, and Superintendent Merrick and Ballow are on this particular planning team, or leading this team, along with a number of elementary and secondary principals. It's health checks, it's social distancing, the physical layout of the building, the cleaning, enhanced cleaning that'll have to go on. In terms of creating and maintaining community, Superintendent Cipriano and Nar are both helping lead this. So it's a bit of a combination of wellness, sense of community in the building, making sure everybody's comfortable feeling back, feeling back in the building, as well as prepping for students who might need additional support with regards to feeling comfortable, mental health concerns, et cetera. Curriculum instruction is going to be a huge concern, or something that we've certainly turned our mind to. So Superintendent Pocassen, Kroll, McGillicuddy, Penelly, our family school superintendents are all involved in this one. And obviously, the curriculum services department, looking at how we can support students both at school and virtually, if necessary, in both synchronous and asynchronous modalities. And then finally, although Superintendent Nar is kind of charged with Catholic identity in remote spaces, she worked very closely with our religion and family life consultant Patricia Dalpan, and with our assistant chaplain Jillian. This is something we'll all have front of mind, and certainly our school principals will. I would argue or offer that maintaining that Catholic identity in a virtual sense is something that our schools have done an excellent job of over the last two months in a variety of different ways. So I think both our teachers and our school principals deserve recognition in that regard. They've done a lot of work to try and maintain that. Again, tech support, there's kind of two elements to it. There's the curriculum side of tech support. So Superintendent Kroll is kind of jumping back and forth between the curriculum side and the tech side. And then obviously, the tech side of it. So having devices, ensuring password and security of the system as a whole. In the surveys that we sent out with regards to the multi-year strategic plan, we did include a section in all of those surveys to get a sense of what worked and what didn't work in our distance learning experiment over the last two months. In terms of next steps, those steering committees continue to meet. They'll meet throughout the summer. The ministry has committed to hopefully getting a draft plan out to us soon. A final plan out by the end of June, but it'll be fairly overarching. I did send the trustees the Alberta plan that came out, I think a week and a half ago. I would anticipate our plan looking similar to that. New Brunswick's just released their plan as well. I'll send that to you on Friday, just to get another sense of it. Our ministry and our government is looking at both Alberta and New Brunswick and their plans. We'll have some final decision around reentry, hopefully by the beginning of August. So at that point, the ministry, in consultation with public health, in consultation with, they're doing a lot of consult with sick kids in Toronto, they'll give us some direction as to what way we can open up. So what are those, out of those three scenarios, what we will come back to. And as always, you can stay connected with everything up-to-date distance learning at the Learn at Home website.
So I need to, can I have, I need to interject. We need to have a motion to extend. So can I have a motion to extend, trustees?
I can move it.
All right, moved by trustee Carabella. Seconded by trustee O'Hearn Zernota. Can I have, I will take it to a vote. Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa, we have a motion on the floor to extend. I need your vote.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I have to step away for a minute. So we're waiting, we're voting to extend beyond eleven o'clock, is that it?
That is correct.
We need a unanimous vote here?
Yes, one vote kills it, one no vote, sorry.
I vote to support the extension.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Motion fails. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Moved by trustee DeRosa. Seconded by?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte?
Can I ask a very quick point of order? As I have a notice of motion that hasn't been read yet, how would you like me to deal with that?
Well, if the more, if the meeting ceases, then it has to be brought in at the next meeting. Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, obviously from earlier today.
I don't think so. I think it's, it follows the usual protocols we've been following.
But she didn't.
Yeah, no, I raised point of order, exactly.
Sorry, my apologies, I am tired.
No, apologies are, is that we choose, we pick and choose, and I'm sorry, past practice does not supersede bylaws, and I once again am going to point out that for some reason, we don't want to follow the bylaws when it's convenient. We only follow them when it's self-serving, and it's very discouraging, particularly when it affects and impacts our ratepayers.
So I, excuse me, trustee Guzzo, what is your point of order? I know you've made a statement. I erred, and trustee O'Hearn Zernota's notice of motion was read. She has seven days.
The notice of motion was not read, she gave us a title.
She gave the title, my apologies, she gave the title. So if we allowed trustee DeRosa's, that it only follows suit, that we also allow that.
So again, I'm raising a point of order under item nine point one-two, which states that a notice of motion has to meet a whole bunch of different things, which it shall be made during the approval of agenda, which it was, which was the title, shall be submitted in writing at the regular meeting of the board and recorded in minutes for consideration by the board. At its next regular meeting, which it has not, shall take the form at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. I shall move or cause to be removed that, that did not happen.
Trustee Guzzo, I said that, and then somebody else said, that's not what you did with trustee DeRosa.
That is what I raised that, which was what my order that you overruled earlier. So, Mr. Chair.
I didn't, I didn't overrule you. We brought it to a vote, and the board decided.
You know what, I would implore you to listen to the recorded minutes. I raised the point of order, you overruled my point of order based on nine point one-two and a legal opinion that we submitted to you, and we asked you in advance, and it was not shared with all the other trustees. You allowed the motion, it was brought, it was discussed this evening.
To a vote, trustee, trustee Guzzo, I took it to a vote. And if I'm to read your, I've just, I just have in front of you Woodboll's conclusions. While there were some irregularities with how the notice of motion was introduced, these irregularities may not be sufficient to get the motion removed from the agenda as an action item.
Sorry, Chair Antumasi, that is unfair that you cherry picked what you chose to read out of that opinion, because that is only a very small snippet.
All right, so then here's what we're going to do. We're going to distribute the, does everybody have this?
Thank you, we know how we need to proceed.
Sure.
So, excuse me, trustee DeRosa, you don't have the floor. So trustee Guzzo, has this legal opinion been circulated to all the trustees? I wasn't able to download it. It was downloaded for me here.
But unfortunately, Mr. Chair, that is your role, is when it is sent to you and to the secretary and the vice chair. If you're unable to share that information, then you need to let everybody know that. You don't get to use that as an excuse for not circulating it. We follow protocol, we got that opinion today. As soon as we got it, we forwarded it to you immediately with a brief explanation. We left it upon you to deal with it, you chose not to. You said that you chose not to take the opinion that was offered. So we raised it as a point of order this evening. If you did not share it, I will share it with any trustee, and I asked you earlier this evening.
Trustee Guzzo, I've stated publicly, and it's on record, that I have issues with downloading. It wasn't made known to me until I came to the board at this particular legal opinion. There's no way I can read five pages of a legal opinion. Excuse me, trustee DeRosa, I have the floor.
All right.
So I cannot read five pages in a matter of minutes and make some sort of conclusion. So I implore you to consider what it is that you're stating. I'm not cherry picking, I'm not making decisions that favor one over the other. So I have decided that we're going to look at your legal opinion. It was not disseminated to everybody, I was unable to do so, just like I was not able to download the director's response to his appraisal. We will add, trustee, excuse me, I have the floor.
Are you the only person on that email? You know what, Mr. Chair, this is, you are supposed to be running this nonpartisan. You're not supposed to be biased, you're supposed to be listening, and you're supposed to be guiding. And if you didn't, if you were unable to.
Point of order, I believe the meeting's over.
Opinion, trustee Duarte.
Meeting is over, let's adjourn. Thank you, can I have a, can I have a resolution to that there are no absentees here?
I move it.
Seconded by? Seconded by?
Okay, can I just, can I just get an answer to my question?
Meeting is over.
So trustee, trustee O'Hearn Zernota, it will be brought up at the next meeting. All right?
I don't know what that means, so just send me an email in clarity, okay? So I understand what I got to do next, that's all I want to know.
Yeah, I will, thank you.
Legal letter obtained.
Closing prayer?
Can we have a closing prayer? Trustee Duarte, please save me here.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this prayer is going to save everybody. So thanks once again to everybody for supporting the name of Saint Francis Xavier for Milton High School. And I'd like to invite trustee Murphy and trustee Carita to join me in this prayer. It's a great day for Milton. So please join me in the sign of our faith, the prayer is in front of us, in the name of the Father, and Son, Holy Spirit. Great Saint Francis Xavier, well-beloved and full of charity, in union with you, Great St. Francis Xavier, well-beloved and full of charity, in union with you, we reverently adore the Divine Trinity. We give thanks to God for the singular gift of grace bestowed on you in life and in heaven, and we ask you with all the affections of our heart, by your closeness to God, to ask for us the grace to live a holy life.
We ask you to bring the intention deep within our hearts to God, we render our intentions to you, God, asking for you to answer our prayers in a way that is the glory of God, for the well-being of all at the Fulton Catholic District School Board.
Oh my Lord Jesus, teach us to be generous, teach us to serve you as you deserve, to give and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heed the wounds, to toil and not to ask for rest, to labor seeking no reward, save that of knowing I do thy will. Amen. St. Francis Xavier, pray for us.
Pray for us, amen.
And the Father, and the Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone, and goodbye.
Good night.
Motion, can I have a motion to adjourn, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move it.
I move it.
I move it.
Seconded, anybody against?
Check.
I don't think so, thank you, the motion passes, thank you.
Goodbye for real then this time.
Thank you so much for a great school year, bye, thanks for speaking.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.